Welcome everyone. Calls me into order at 4:06 PM. As always, we humbly acknowledge the land we live, learn, work, and play is Treaty 8 territory, traditional lands of Cree and Dene, unceded territory of the Métis people. Off the record, we have Councillor Ball, Councillor Granison, and Councillor Dogard joining us via Teams. And Councillor, you can have your cameras turned on for voting purposes as well. If anyone tends to wish to present a council on any of the items on the agenda, please see Legislative Services Desk from our right, and please register before the start of that item. When you do register, you have five minutes to speak. Please remain on topic or remain seated for questions. Moving on consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone. Can I have someone make that motion? Councillor Benjoko?
Thank you Mayor Bowman. I move that the recommendations contained in Items 2.1 and 2.2 be approved.
Thanks Councillor Benjoko, and thanks for the second, Councillor Ball. We'll call for a vote. Councillor Granison, Councillor Dogard's in favor?
Yes.
That's Kerry Namacy, thank you. Next we have a report on Fort Makai Community Center Municipal Facility Operating Grant. I'd like to invite Community Center Services to introduce the report, please.
Good evening Mayor and Council. My name is Toni Elliott and Acting Director for Community Services. With me this evening is Janelle Flurry, Manager of Community Partnerships and Initiatives. We are presenting the 2025 Municipal Facility Operating Grant Request for the Fort Makai Métis Nation.
On June 3rd, 2025, the Fort Makai Community Center ribbon-cutting event was held, signaling substantial completion of the new facility. The Fort Makai Métis Nation Association was identified as the operator of this community facility, which triggers an invitation to apply for the Municipal Facility Operating Grant. The requested amount is for July 1st to December 31st, 2025, retroactive to the start of the operating agreement. Since this is a brand-new facility and Fort Makai Métis Nation is entering into the facility operating grant for the first time, there are no prior years of comparable grant requests shown on the following slides. Pictured on this slide is the front facade of the new facility to the left, and the ribbon-cutting ceremony on June 3rd pictured on the right.
The 2025 Municipal Facility Operating Grant Request is for $340,000, representing 100% subsidy for the operations of this facility. This is the projected cost of operations for the second half of 2025, and takes into consideration that they have no revenue-generating activities at this time. The Fort Makai Métis Nation had just under $9.2 million expenses in 2024, and were reporting unrestricted net assets of $2,516,524 for the end of that same period. Since the unrestricted net assets are less than the annual operating expenses, they are eligible for Municipal Facility Operating Grant. The table shown here includes the projected expenses for the Fort Makai Community Center for the remainder of 2025. Of the total $340,000 operating expenses, $72,000 is allocated to salaries and wages for two full-time staff, and $268,000 is allocated to overhead, which includes utilities, insurance, maintenance, IT, and other administrative costs.
The Fort Makai Community Center is a purpose-built facility intended to be a hub for community, and the Municipal Facility Operating Grant Request represents an evolution in the relationship between the RMWB and the Fort Makai Métis Nation. The grant funding will be used by the Fort Makai Métis Nation to make the facility available to all users, fostering community access and a sense of belonging for all who gather there. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Councillor have any questions? Councillor Benjoko?
Thank you Mayor Bowman. Thank you for the presentation. So we have two full-time staff for $70,000, for both of them for full-time?
Through the Chair to Councillor Benjoko, the request from Fort Makai Métis Nation is for only July 1st to December 31st.
Okay.
So the $72,000 in wages and expenses are for two full-time staff for half of the year.
Thank you.
Thanks Councillor Benjoko. Any other questions from Council? Councillor Weigl?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So is the municipal building itself like a community center, or is it active something else? Because do we have something similar like this in another community where we've got full-time staff in there?
Through the Chair to Councillor Weigl, it is not a municipal office. So similar to what you would see in Janvey, for example, we have a rural municipal office. This is a community center that will be entirely operated by the Métis Nation for any community member in the municipality to use. And we do not have municipal staff working there. It's only the two staff to operate the facility.
Under a grant?
Under a grant, yeah.
And so would this be similar to say something, say in the future that we build the community center in Sabre Creek? The Sabre Creek Resident Society could then have to put a grant in for two full-time staff to operate it?
So through the Chair to Councillor Weigl, one example comparable could be the Doug Burns Cabin, operated by the Tarmac and Nordic Ski Club.
Okay. And do they have full-time staff there?
They have one full-time staff.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks Councillor Weigl. Any other questions for Administration? I'm not seeing it's... Okay. Councillor Cardinal?
Thanks for the presentation. My question is, is there going to be a board that's going to take care of it? Or is it going to be the nation?
Through the Chair to Councillor Cardinal, it is the nation that is the applicant of record, and they're going to be the operator of this facility.
Through the Chair to Councillor Cardinal, for further clarity, it's the Executive Director that oversees the operation of the facility, not the President and Council.
And who would, I guess they'd report back to you guys for...
Through the Chair, yes.
Yeah, okay. No, thanks.
Thanks Councillor Cardinal. Can I have someone make the motion? Councillor Benjoko?
I move that $340,000 be allocated to the Fort Makai Métis Nation Association under the 2025 Municipal Facility Operating Grant.
Thanks Councillor Benjoko, and thanks for the second, Councillor Bucier. Does any Councillor have any other questions, comments, or debate points? Councillor Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd be supporting the motion. I think it's a great opportunity for the Fort Makai Métis Nation Association to provide some services to the community there, and have the municipal asset utilized well for the community. And I think it's a great initiative for them, and hopefully that we could eventually see it all grow more. And hopefully everybody participates in that building and it's run professionally. So, thanks.
Thanks Councillor Cardinal. Without all, don't see other questions. I'll call for a vote.
In favor?
Thanks Councillor Granison and Councillor Dogard, both in favor. And that's Kerry Namacy. Thank you everyone. Thanks Tony, thanks Janelle. I think you're just still sitting here, right? Yeah. Remain seated. Next we have, we have the Sinclair Athletic Park Clubhouse concession, slow pitch agreement. Whenever you're ready, Toni.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Toni Elliott, and with me is Janelle Flurry. We are presenting the recommendation that council approve a 25-year nominal lease with the RE/MAX BP Slow Pitch League for exclusive access to the Sinclair Athletic Park concession and two storage lockers in the clubhouse, and that council waive the condition that the league be required to prove use of their proceeds made at the concessions in exchange for the nominal lease. RE/MAX BP Slow Pitch has been a strong community recreation league for many years, and was one of the three intended user groups for the Sinclair Athletic Park during its inception. Presently, the RMWB holds a seasonal license with the league defining use of the concession facility valid through 2028. Representatives from the league presented to council on June 10th, 2025, requesting a long-term lease that recognizes their league as the intended user group for the concession facility, storage lockers, and park in general, while also respecting their value as a recreational partner.
Administration assessed the most appropriate agreement type for long-term use of the concession and lockers. The league voiced that continued dedicated use will provide well-deserved stability, and has been determined that a lease is most appropriate to allow this. A license is typically assigned for short-term use of a property and may be revoked within 30 days, while a lease provides exclusive rights to occupy property and is more secure. In council's resolution on June 10th, 2025, administration was directed to return with a report for council's consideration on July 8th. There are several reasons administration is returning to council for approval of these resolutions, rather than with an update for information. Under Section 70 of the Municipal Government Act, the RMWB is required to notify the public when entering into a nominal lease with an entity that is not non-for-profit. Notification is in accordance with Section 606, meaning we must advertise for two consecutive weeks if tonight's motion is passed. There are no other lease agreements between the RMWB and a user group for this length of time. Standard lease agreements are offered for terms between one to five years, sometimes with an option to extend. Other recreation facilities are governed by the operating agreements, not leases, which are held between the RMWB and a nonprofit entity. Being that this is a lease agreement, not an operating agreement, and RE/MAX BP Slow Pitch is not a registered nonprofit entity at this time, offering this agreement type at a nominal rate is a special case and not within administration's authority. An agreement term of 25 years requires council approval in anticipation of changes to the CAO bylaw that, if approved this evening, will restrict administration from entering to agreements of this length.
I wish to note that this lease agreement is unique. It reflects a commitment to community-led recreation and sport, as well as the RMWB's relationship with the RE/MAX BP Slow Pitch League. The league was responsible for securing land for the development of the Sinclair Athletic Park, enabling the community's vision to be brought to life. The league transferred this land, including four completed softball diamonds, at a value of $1 million to the RMWB in 1999. A nominal lease of this length acknowledges this exchange and should not be precedent for agreements of similar length with commercial or for-profit entities. In addition, the league has been a philanthropic presence in the community, having donated over $1 million to social causes during their tenure. It is for these reasons that administration is recommending this resolution be approved. We have been in conversation with representatives of the league today, and they are willing to register as a nonprofit association if council wishes to amend the proposed motions. We have drafted some motions, if you would like to consider those, with the condition that the league become a registered nonprofit. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thanks Toni, thanks Janelle. A quick question myself. I don't know if you can answer this, or Luanne or somebody. How long has the Slow Pitch League existed in Fort McMurray?
Through the Chair to Mayor Bowman, I believe, since 2000, but Luanne would definitely be able to answer that better.
Forty years. Okay, perfect. So another 25 years isn't a stretch. Perfect, okay. Does Councillor have any other questions? Councillor Ball?
Yeah, I also had one question for the league. I guess Luanne is there. Does the terms of this contract satisfy, or this lease satisfy their needs? And keeping in mind that frankly, if it wasn't for the Slow Pitch Leagues, the ball diamonds wouldn't even be there. They built the original facility.
Maybe I can invite Luanne up if you want to come and answer Councillor Ball's question?
Through the Chair to Councillor Ball, yeah, we're more than satisfied with that. I had a conversation with Amanda Owens and Bryn, and we had nonprofit status. We just let it lapse because we weren't doing any more bingos or fundraising. We remained in good standing, so I offered to do that if it simplified things and made things cleaner on the books. So we have that ready to go. I just need the President's signature, and he's in Newfoundland. But to answer you, Councillor Ball, yes, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks Councillor Ball. Councillor Weigl?
Thank you Mr. Mayor, through the Chair. Probably this question is too long as well. If somebody else is using the diamond or would like the concession open, is it up to the discretion of the league whether they'll open the concession for them or not? What kind of, what other user group has access to you guys being open? Obviously, it wouldn't be them using it. That was part of the problem, is you guys having to move your stuff in and out. But would you be open for other things that were going on at the park?
Through the Chair to Councillor Weigl, as an example, when soccer was having provincials, they didn't want to operate the concession. We offered to do it for them and give them the proceeds. We're certainly more than willing to be collaborative. I wouldn't, if your family wanted to use it for a weekend, I'm not sure that we would use our manpower to open. But for big events, for sport, for sure, we would collaborate with people.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Councillor Weigl. Any other questions from Council? I'm not seeing any. Do we have any delegates?
No delegates for this one, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Can someone make the motion? Can someone make the motion? Oh, yes, I guess it would be whichever motion Counsel would want to. If you look on your screen, there's two motions there.
I'm happy to do it.
Do you want the alternative or the, the one that's in your package, Counsel Ball?
I'm just reading. I've got it sitting in front of me here, and there's two on the screen.
Through the Chair to Counsel, appearing on my screen, being shared through Teams, is the alternative motion that was drafted with Community Service in light of the updated conversations around the status of registering as a nonprofit organization. If someone would like to make that motion, you're certain to do, you're certainly welcome to do so, or the original motions as presented in the report are also available on your eScribe.
So once you're ready, Counsel Ball, whichever motion you want to make.
I'm just trying to, just reading here to see what, really what the difference is. The difference is just the not-for-profit, and I believe Luanne said that they're applying for that anyway, right?
Correct.
I may as well do that one. That RE/MAX BP Pitch Slow Pitch League be offered a 25-year lease at a nominal rate for ex, for exclusive access of the concession and two storage lockers in the Syncrude Athletic Park Clubhouse with the condition of registering as a not-for-profit organization.
And thanks for the second, Counsel Lovely. Does Counsel have any debate, discussion, or comments? Not seeing any, I'll call for a vote.
In favor.
Thanks, Counsel Grandison, in favor. And Counsel Dogar, in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. And you're still here. Next, you have a report on a former Heritage Society Agreement Extension. So I'd like to invite Community Services to introduce the report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Once again, for the record, my name is Tony Elliott, Acting Director of Community Services, and with me is Janelle Flurry, Manager of Community Partnerships and Initiatives. The request before you this evening is to extend the service agreement with the Fort McMurray Heritage Society to September 30th, 2025. On March 3rd, 2025, Counsel approved $300,000 to be added to the Community Partnerships and Initiatives Department budget to support the operations of Heritage Park and Heritage Shipyard for three months. To accomplish this, the RMWB entered into a service agreement with the society for the period of April 1st to June 30th, 2025. The society has demonstrated significant progress in realigning its priorities and have submitted the 2023 audited financial statements. With approximately half of the funds remaining, they have requested that the agreement period be extended for the additional three months effective July 1st to September 30th, 2025. This will support operations through the summer months and the submission of the 2024 audited financial statements. Administration supports this extension, and no further funds are requested. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Tony. Does Counsel have any questions? Counsel Cardinal?
Thanks for your presentation. I'm guessing this is for operations? Pages, bills?
Through the Chair. Yes, that's correct. The operations of both the shipyard and the heritage village.
Thanks.
Does Counsel have any other questions? Not seeing any, so Counsel Benjoko, go ahead.
Thank you. So what's the structure that we have on grant for staffing? I know we have a loaner staff from, if I could call that, call it that, from RMWB, so do we also have other overheads and administrative costs in the $300,000?
Through the Chair to Counselor Benjoko, so we have a secondment agreement with the Fort McMurray Heritage Society for staff to be seconded there until September 30th as well, to act as their ED for the time being, so that staff is still on RMWB payroll, so they're still receiving salary and benefits. And the $300,000 for the society's use is to really pay the additional staff that are part of the society, maintenance, IT costs, and their, cost of their audits for 2024 and 2023.
And the activities on the heritage site, not the shipyard, as the activities continued to be as normal, do we have the stall and everything opened, for my information and everybody's information? The reason why I asked is that I passed by a couple of months ago, and it looked very quiet, so I just want to know if people can expect that they can go in there or what the situation is. Thank you.
Through the Chair to Counselor Benjoko, so the Heritage Village remains open, and the Heritage Shipyard just opened a couple of weeks ago. They're open Thursdays through to Saturday or Sunday from 12 to 5, so it has reduced hours. And they have done, as Tony mentioned, incredible work to realign their activities to the heritage mandate, so you may not see major events happening out of there all the time. They have been booking community events, so weddings, events of those nature, but they are very much active, and the gift shop is open.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bowman.
Thanks, Counsel Benjoko. Does Counsel have any other questions? I'm not seeing any, would someone like to make the motion? Counsel Weigl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved that the Regional and Municipalities of Wood Buffalo extend the service agreement for Fort McMurray Heritage Society until September 30th, 2025, effective July 1st, 2025.
Thanks, Counsel Weigl, and thanks for the second, Counsel Boucier. Any other debates, discussion, or comments from Counsel? I'd just like to add, this agreement doesn't, this extension doesn't, there's no financial ask, but it's just a staffing. I think they're...
I think they're, I think they're, I think they're...
Wow. I'll try again. I just think that the Board's done a great job kind of getting things lined up and working with, and having our staff member over there doing a great job, and I see no issue in extending this agreement, because it's just doing good for the park and the shipyard together. So I'll be supporting this. Counsel Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I will not be supporting this motion. I do not like what's going on over there, so that's what's, that's what I'm going to be doing. I'm not going to be supporting it. I, there's issues there, and I know that they're trying to fix them, but paper doesn't lie, so, thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Cardinals. Does any other Counsel have any other discussion, debate points? I don't see any, so I'll call for a vote.
In favor.
Thanks, Counsel Grandison. Did we lose Counsel Dogar?
I see him there with his hand up. I don't know if you can see him.
No, we cannot see him on screen.
He is there with his hand up.
Hello? Yes, do you see me? Do you listen to me, sir?
No, we can't see you. We can see, I think, the ceiling in your place.
I don't know. I can see everybody.
They can hear you, so...
How do you vote, Counsel Dogar?
Yes?
In favor?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's carried with one opposed. Thanks, everyone. Next up, we have the, are you guys get to leave? Good. Okay, thanks. Next up, we have the relocation of the Echol Boreal. Like to invite Project Management and Facility Services to introduce the report. Again, just please introduce yourself, sing whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. For the record, my name is Elliot White, and I'm here representing administration. I'm here to present a proposed partnership request on behalf of the Francophone School Board with respect to the Echol Boreal Francophone School. Currently, the school board is working with the province to replace their school in Abasand Heights. This project is funded, managed, and being constructed by the province. On June 16th, 2025, the school board submitted a letter to administration with a request to consider potential involvement in the relocation of the Echol Boreal School from Abasand Heights to the new site, to a new site in Abrams Land. This relocation would be contingent on the following. The municipality providing full financial support and assuming responsibility for pro, project cost differentials between the two sites. The municipality providing a, a school, or sorry, a soccer field at the Abrams site that is paid for by the municipality, and a joint agreement to provide adequate playground equipment at the Abrams Land site. The relocation impacts would require the municipality to pay for the following costs. Additional design costs associated with shifting location of the school, which is estimated at $1.3 million. The construction of the soccer field is estimated at .7 million. The construction of a school playground is estimated at .6 million. The cost escalation associated with a schedule disruption, if we assume a 2% annual inflation over one year, would be an estimated $1 million. And we also have a construction of additional road modifications in Abrams Land that we estimated at $1 million. So the total minimum costs that the municipality would be responsible to pay would be $4.6 million. So in addition to these costs, there's additional unknowns that we have that relate to the shift in location. We'll go through that next. So the relocation has additional considerations. First, the, the school board would need authorization from two government ministries. But the, the three that I want to bring up associated with financial risks that we have to consider are the following. There's a risk that the municipality would be required to pay for schedule risks associated with the location change. So if we move from Abrams, or sorry, if we remove from Abasand to Abrams, we're, we're going to lose about, they're going to lose about a year on their schedule. So the RMWB would be, we would have a, a risk associated with a $10 million federal grant that the, that the government has. So if, if, if they end up losing that grant, there's a potential for us to pay that. There's also a lot of conversations around tariffs, obviously with changes that are happening in the current economic environment. So if tariffs were to increase between now and when the school gets built in, in approximately a year from now, any, any tariff increase associated with shifting the, the construction start time from the fall till next year, the municipality may be required to pay that difference. Furthermore, if there are construction cost increases associated with the change in location, so say, for example, up in Abrams, there's different soil conditions, there's changes in the site layout, the RMWB may be required to pay for that difference. There are other considerations that the administration wishes to identify. There's, there's a few, there's a recreational consideration as well. The initial vision of Abrams Land was to accommodate face centers, regional rec center, and, and public use buildings. The Abrams Land site that we're referring to is development-ready. It neighbors the Northside Twin Arena. Using a phased approach, this proposed site could instead be used for potential infrastructure expansion for recreational needs in the community, which would alleviate community recreational demands and potentially fulfill community recreational growth needs. If Counsel were to approve the relocation up in, up to Abrams Land and future recreational growth were to occur, we could expand further west in Abrams Land. However, that's not a shovel-ready site, and there'd be additional costs associated with creating a shovel-ready site. Furthermore, in terms of financial considerations, it's very difficult to quantify all potential cost drivers. Administration has provided a high-level overview of the prospective cost to share with you guys, Mayor and Counsel, and to assist with you to understand all the financial risks associated with the potential decisions. That's right. Should, should Counsel wish to proceed, administration's recommendation, recommendation is for the municipality implement a cost control measure by establishing a maximum expenditure threshold of $2.3 million for the relocation project, and an additional 2.3 for future capital ask. So those, that would be for the, the playground, the soccer field, and the, and the additional road considerations in Abrams Land. The recommended motions would, were direct administration to enter into a lease agreement for the purposes of securing three hectares of land in Abrams Land for the relocation of the Echol Boreal from its current location in Abasand Heights. We would allocate $2.3 million from the emerging issues reserve for funding the agreement for additional project design, engineering consideration, and impacts due to cost escalation from the schedule shift. We would not assume financial responsibility for any additional unknown risks associated with the project, and we would bring forward capital budget requests in future years, estimate at $2.3 million for a new soccer field, new playground, and any road improvements necessary to accommodate the relocation of the school to Abrams Land. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. A couple of questions to start. During presentation, you mentioned some unforeseen costs, whether they be tariffs or them not getting a grant from the provincial government, that sort of thing that might wave, but our motion has a maximum, so if we went over this maximum, we'd have to come back again to Counsel for approval on any increases that are, aren't in this motion?
Through the Chair to the Mayor. So the intent is to, to cap the, the cost and, and correct if, if there was any other additional cost beyond the 2.3, there would be a requirement to come back for any additional ask, yeah.
Perfect, thanks. And was there any talks about in Abasand, the demolition of the school that's there, and remediation of the property in this move?
Through the Chair, sorry, to the Mayor, are you referring to a conversation with, say, administration and the school board?
Yes, if they're, they're requesting this land in Abraham's, any cost associated with the demo of the Echol Boreal where it exists right now, is, that won't come back on the municipality?
I see. To the Chair, oh, sorry, to the Mayor, the, the, the old school would still be demolished, and that cost would still be borne by the, by the province.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Ball?
Thank you, through the Chair. I know we listed a bunch of cons, which is kind of, kind of normal. What are the, what are the pros for this site?
Through the...
Like, what are the, what are the benefits of them moving there?
Through the Chair, the, the conversations that we've been having with the board, and I'd, I'd like the board, the board is here actually to speak to some of the pros as well, and one of the conversations was the, about the ability to expand in future, in future years, should they need to. The other pro, and then I'd like the board to speak to this, because I'm kind of the messenger here, I do know that the majority of the students are on the north side of the bridge, so that's another pro. So that's, that's the ones that I can speak to, and we can ask when the board comes up to speak to others.
And, and wouldn't, and wouldn't a pro be that we, we have a, when it's all said and done, we have a shovel-ready site in Abasand for a smaller school, and until that potentially becomes a realization, we have a, a clean space for Abasand, and we don't put them in a construction window of three to five years?
Through the Chair, there's, there's definitely other pros. You can, you can say that we're getting, there would be another soccer field constructed in the community, another playground, things of that nature. Comes with costs, operating them, as you know. But yeah, absolutely, there's, you know, there's... But yeah, absolutely, there's, you know, there's the opportunity to free up land in Abbeysand for future consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ball. Counselor Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. Through the chair to Elliot. Appreciate you taking the time to present to us today. I guess fiscally, I'd like to ask how much money has been guaranteed by Alberta Education?
Through the chair, I'd have to give clarity on that.
The school, has any funds been, any interest or any conversation with Alberta to help move the school?
Oh, I see. Through the chair, I don't know that answer, to be honest. I'd rather have the board, when they come up, answer that question. I'm not, they have been speaking directly to the government themselves. So just for clarity, we are communicating with the board as administration, and then the board is communicating with the government, the government of the province of Alberta. So the province of Alberta is the builder, the funder. They're basically responsible for building the school. Yeah.
Okay, I'll leave my questions for the board then.
Thanks, Counselor Cardinal. Counselor Weigl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair. Thank you, Elliot. A couple of questions, and this is just for my understanding. I don't understand. You said the design is going to cost somewhere around $1.3 million. Just so I understand, where does that cost come from? Like, for me, you've designed a school or just moving it over? Why does it cost $1.3 million to redesign?
It's a great question. Through the chair, the question, those numbers directly come from the letter from the school board. What they're saying is they'd like to pick up the design, the box, the school, and place it in the same location. But in order to do so, they would have to do geotechnical studies in the new location, so that's for one, that would be a consideration. The other is that the overall school grounds change, so your shape of it changes, how you have your parking lot laid out and things of that nature. So your civil, your landscaping and things, that will also change. And there's minor, minor things like that, so.
And that seems like a realistic cost of $1.3 million?
It's a very expensive endeavor to, if you have a 99% design, to then pull back to say, you know, 80% or 70% and redo that portion. So it's a reasonable cost, absolutely. Geotechnical can be expensive. They have to go into a full drilling program.
Right.
We have talked about the idea of the availability of geotechnical reports from the RMWB.
Right.
We've done geotechnical associated with the Twin Arena.
Yeah.
And so it's, we just don't know whether the government is willing to accept that. They're very low risk averse, so they're just going to come in and want to do their own geotechnical report, so.
Okay. Have we already done a geotechnical on that land?
So we would have done a geotechnical for the Northside Twin Arena.
Yeah.
I would have to report back on the history of that site because we would have done a lot of work pre-fire, about 10 years ago.
Awesome. The second one, soccer field, I guess, who operates, if we're building the field for the school, does the community have access to that? Is it operated solely by the school? Can it be a community field after hours? How does that work?
Through the chair, as part of the agreements that we have with all the school boards, all playgrounds and the fields would be used by any community member, absolutely.
So it becomes a public asset basically at that point?
100%.
That's awesome. And last question, just with the road, the extra cost that goes into the road, would we incur that cost no matter who went there? Or would that normally come upon who would ever take over that space?
That's a great question. It's possible, it's likely that it would be a cost that we would incur. However, it's a smaller, the current site there that's there is about five hectares. And so we may have to adjust where the entrances are to that site based on a smaller, smaller school.
Right.
Say, for example, if we were to build the full recreational facility that was envisioned pre-fire, we wouldn't have to put as much, we wouldn't have to change the transportation.
Right.
Infrastructure in that area. So what we're doing is we're making allowances for a turnaround at the end of that road, if you want to go into Abrams.
Right.
Because you're going to generate more traffic in that area, more school kids drop off, things of that nature.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Weigl. Counselor Grandison? I think you're on mute, Counselor Grandison? There you go.
I'm actually saying, I hope you can hear me, and then I realized my mic was off. Through the chair, Mr. Elliot, I'm just wanting to get clarity again. So this, excuse me, this was all ready to go. All the approvals, the geotech, everything else was all ready to go on the site that it's on now. Then this question came up, and I understand the merits of the question. But the results of the question coming up and possibly moving the school, it now sounds like both the feds, the province, and the school board want us to bear the entire risk of moving a school that was already designed, ready to go at its existing site. Is that correct?
Through the chair, to the question, I would say yes to your statement. The suggestion is that we bear the costs. The recommendation, however, from administration is we cap those, and so that we can save, you know, we can say it's 2.3 for the agreement and 2.3 in capital projects.
So we make in this recommendation, should it pass, and then the province, the feds, or the school board disagree with it, we now go back into negotiation again and delay this project even further? We're already talking about delaying it more than a year, so if they don't agree to that, if council agrees to that, and they don't agree to it, now we go back into negotiating again and add more time. Would that be accurate?
Through the chair, I think I would like that, I don't want to speak for the board here.
I'm not asking you to. I'm asking you to speak for the municipality.
I could speak for the municipality, so in speaking with the board, they went back to the government with sort of the concerns that were raised by administration associated with the risks of taking on these financial considerations. And there was no change in the position from the provincial government. So from an administration perspective, I wouldn't expect to see too much movement from the government. So if, I don't know how much negotiation abilities there would be available to the board if we choose to move forward tonight.
And I can appreciate your answer. I understand you're doing the fine dance up there, like trying to just deal with what the municipal. But regardless, we got $4.6 million that the taxpayers are now going to be on a hook for, and an extension of one year. We already know that to be true on a project that's already been approved, already done, all ready to go. Now, I understand there are concerns, size, construction, but have trouble with, like, people on the Anthony Hendate would have been complaining for 15 years because that's how long they took to build it, or the Calgary Trail, or.
Counselor Grandison, if you have a question there, we can.
I'm getting into, I'm getting into the question. So like, with each of these projects that take time, is there a consideration, like, where do we draw the line? Yes, there's going to be constructions, but it's already been approved and everything. Adding all of this extra time, is that normal because of interference in the community? I'm trying to understand why we would stop something that's already approved. That's my question, is like, is this a normal practice or is this something new that I'm not aware of? Is that a fair question? Is that even a question?
Through the chair, this is, to me, a unique situation. I haven't experienced it. Now, there might be others in administration that I've seen in the past. As we spoke last time or a few times ago on this subject in terms of the school, there has been agreements in the past between school boards, governments, and the municipality in cost-sharing agreements. So the cost-sharing agreement, I would say, is not completely unusual. I would suggest that the level of financial risk that would be borne by the municipality is high. That's, I'm comfortable saying that for sure.
All right. Thank you. One more question as it relates to this. So I heard that many students are on the north, and I would suspect that many students are on the north. But I've spoken with many families who moved to Abbeysand, who live there. We, like, we have a statement saying there are many, but there are many people in Abbeysand who moved there to go to that school that will be equally disappointed. So I'm not sure that that, it's, never mind, Mr. Mayor, that's more of a debate than a question. I apologize. I'll withdraw that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Grandison. We'll get back to that in a few minutes. Counselor Cardinal? Oops, you shut your mic off, Cardinal.
So you said $1.3 million to design the school?
Through the chair, to the question. So they have a design, call it 100% if you wish. And in order to move the school from, you know, a location A to a location B, they're going to have to go back to, I don't want to say the drawing board, but they're going to go back to their offices and change the design slightly. So they'll go from 100% complete, they'll pull it back and have to redesign certain aspects of that, of that facility. So you're going to have to look at, all around, the school will have to change, parking lots would have to change, how you enter and exit the property would change, and so that all has to be redesigned. So that's one aspect of that cost. The other is the geotechnical. They've already done geotechnical at the Abbeysand site. They would have to come in and do a drilling program, get their samples for their studies, and draw their conclusions on the design.
Why are we designing the school?
Through the chair, to the question. So we would be responsible for paying the differential, the change between where they're at today versus where they want to go. And so the presentation that's before you and the request of the board is that they would like to move to the new location in Abrams Land. And if we, as a municipality, agree to that, they're suggesting that we, as a municipality, pay for the difference in cost in doing so. And they see that design cost as something that's additional, right?
Wouldn't that be Alberta Education's responsibility?
Through the chair, to the question, what the position of the province, and at least as relayed to me through the board, is that they have a plan, they have a design, they have a parcel of land. And if they were to move forward with that plan, there would be no additional cost to them. If the school gets moved to the north side of town, to Abrams Land, there will be additional costs. And the school board is suggesting that the municipality would bear those costs.
But it didn't answer my question, Albert. Do you believe that's an Alberta Education's fiscal responsibility?
Through the chair, to the question, do I think that the province of Alberta, do I think it's their responsibility? I'm just trying to think of a good answer to that question. It's a great question. If we, as a municipality, see benefits to having that school in Abrams Land for various reasons, and we feel the cost-benefit analysis suits, then it's something that we would pay for. And if that's something that the municipality is wishing to pay, that's what's before you today.
Counselor Dogar, you're interrupting the meeting here. I'm not sure if you're in another conversation, but if you can mute your mic, please.
Put a camera on.
And your camera should be on as well. Sorry, Elliot.
Through the chair, I want to ask Counselor Cardinal whether that response answers your question because.
Not entirely, but somewhat, I guess. I just feel that Alberta gets let off the hook so many darn times with this community, and we still keep doing the same things over and over, so.
Any other question, Counselor Cardinal?
No, you go ahead there, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman, and thank you, Elliot, for the presentation. I'm looking at the cost escalations associated with scheduled disruption. So by, you know, doing this and putting this report together, doing a study about how long have we extended the start of the project? When was the plan, when was the plan that they were going to break the ground? And now, under this new, you know, option, should we go ahead? When would then be, where would they be able to start? Because the cost of that change in time, you're talking about the additional cost escalation of $1 million, so I'm wondering how. So should we pass this tonight? I believe it has just been a few weeks. I know you are giving us the worst-case scenario, and hopefully that's what it is, but I find it a bit, I just want to know.
Yep. Through the chair, to the question, currently, there's a plan to start the project, the school, in Abbeysand in the fall of this year. The numbers that were calculated by administration were based on a full-year delay to the project. That would allow them to do geotechnical reports, do their redesign, and they would, the assumed start date would be 2026, fall 2026, so one year from now. And so what we did is we looked at the Consumer Price Index, looked at a percentage of costs, and that's where we came up with the $1 million. We're recommending, if we were to move forward, that that be capped at that $1 million.
Yeah, delaying, thank you. Delaying this for a whole year also have other consequences. So I'm wondering why we have to, because of the change in the design and geotechnical study and all that. 12 months is a lot, and we know the construction season here is quite short, but I, it's 12 months, I think it's long. I mean, should we pass it tonight? Why can't they start working on this actively as soon as possible? Or maybe this could.
Maybe that would be a question for the board when they're up, Counselor Benjoko?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bowman.
Thanks, Counselor Benjoko. Counselor Ball?
Thank you. Through the chair, I guess I've got a series of questions here for you, Elliot, that's going to take me a little bit to get through, but just want to hypothetical, and I want to address the elephant in the room. Obviously, the land was approved just very recently, correct? The subdivision was approved just, say, a month ago. It wasn't much longer than that.
That's correct. Through the chair.
Right. I find it very interesting that someone's at 95% construction-ready, tender-ready documents when they got the information approved only a month ago. That's not standard practice for developing a site. Usually, your site is approved long in advance of you starting the engineering process. Is that correct?
Through the chair, I would suggest that you are correct in the sense that, yeah, having your land approvals would be typically your first step or one of the earlier steps.
Yeah, exactly. So someone jumped the gun on this, in my opinion, and that's why we're at 95% tender-ready and accepting the fact that, you know, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board to relocate the structure on a new site. Obviously, that's going to require some engineering, hence the one-year delay. My question is miraculously, the proponent was told unequivocally, there are no other sites available. Miraculously, less than a week later, three sites became available. Had they known of those other three sites, would we even be talking about this? Had they known of those other three sites, would we even be talking about this?
Through the chair.
And it's, it's a, it's a rhetorical question in, in, in respect to you, but.
Thank you.
Um, it's, you know, I'm trying not to make a statement, but in reality, someone jumped the gun here.
And we'll have time for that.
Would there have been a delay if they had been able to choose the current site that they do prefer that we're speaking about? And I believe the school is okay with the delay.
You'll probably ask that question to the board when they're up, their, for those delegates.
Well, I'm asking Elliot if there would be a delay, because they would have started working on the engineering work for the currently proposed site that they're asking us.
Through the chair, to the, to the question, um, and I'll speak candidly about any real construction project. If you have, um, your project location known, and if had they known early in advance that there were other sites and they selected their site, and that's usually your first step of any project, no matter whether you're building a school or, or a reservoir, so, um, you're, 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 you're aligning the, 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 the story in, in a, in a sense that, yeah, had they had known about sites prior to starting a design, would we be here? My, my response is likely not.
Exactly. And, and that, and that's, you know, I, I get it and, you know, keeping in mind that the residents of Abysans are, are staunchly in opposition to this. So anyway, I'll leave my rest of my questions to the proponents.
Thanks, Council Ball. Council Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, to the chair, to Elliot. Does Alberta, the school board and their, um, sit down in the same room to discuss any of this, or is it just back and forth?
Through the chair of the question, um, that's a great one. Uh, we have been communicating directly with the, the board who's here today. Uh, and they communicate, um, with the, the province or the, or the builders of the school, so, frankly, Mark and I have been on speed dial to each other for better part of a couple of weeks now, talking about this. So we've been, the administration and, and the, and the board have been talking a lot.
So who came up with the number of 1.3 for the design? Did all three of you?
Uh, through the chair, that was a number that was presented by, um, the, the province. It was, uh, channeled from the board to the letter to us. Um, I reviewed the, the, the number from, from a perspective of, of a, of a project or a design, and it seemed reasonable to me to suggest that we would have that kind of cost to, to pull back the design and, and, and change the design to suit.
Do you ever, do you ever resist a little bit, uh, on the municipality's, uh, municipal aspect of, uh, the responsibility of Alberta?
Uh, through the chair, the position that, that we took was, we're, we're bringing this presentation on, on, sort of on behalf of the board to, um, to council. Um, there was, um, conversations around, uh, minor things that were, you know, I wouldn't say negotiated, but we, we sorted them out and, um, um, pushing back on, on the government to say, well, I don't think it's going to cost 500 or 400, um, thousand dollars to do the, um, a redesign, or a geotechnical report. That wasn't done because the costs are, in, in the view of the administration, they're, they were reasonable, they weren't out of line. Um, we did look at, um, how we would go about the, the, the construction of a playground and the construction of the soccer field and who would be responsible for what to make sure that that was aligned. The other costs that we present to you are costs that were developed by administration, so they weren't, they weren't costs that were, um, from the province. And these are, these are all estimates. Um, these are not, this is not a final price take by any means. That design may come back at, instead of 1.3, it might come back at, uh, 1.2, 1.1, could come back at 1. We don't know the exact cost because it's the end, end price at the end of the day that, that we, that would have to be, um, paid by the municipality.
So when the schools, uh, so when the schools, you know, possibly moved, what would be left behind?
Um, through the chair of the question, in Abysan, what would be left behind would be a, uh, greenfield. So the plan is to, well, the, the plan originally is to demolish the school, so the, that'll be greenfield. And then the, 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 the location where the school was going, because there was a little shift on their Abysan site, would continue to be green spaces.
Thanks.
Thanks, Council Cardinal. Um, just one point across from me, uh, maybe you can answer this, Elliot. Um, if there's no school moving, nothing's going on, if we're going to put a soccer field in the parking lot in Abraham's Landing, what kind of price tag would we look at for doing that? I don't know if you know, or Council Ball may know, but.
Through the chair.
Don't answer.
Through the, through, through to the mayor. You're asking what it would cost to put a.
Just a ballpark figure. If we, if council decided, this council, next council, to put a soccer field in the parking lot in Abraham's, what would be the price, uh, an estimated price tag on, on a job like that?
Off the top of my head, I would suggest that it would be a billion dollars. So we, we estimated $600,000 for, uh, a soccer field. That was, you know, built with the school, so there's some cost savings here. And then you throw a reasonable size, small parking lot. You have to also remember, we have the North Side Twin Arena, it's a good place parking there as well.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Uh, does council have any other questions for administration?
I, I had one more, yeah.
Council Ball, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had one more, just for, for clarity sakes. We have a joint use agreement, um, where, because we mentioned the green spaces, uh, where the municipality cost shares the development of the green spaces on all school sites, correct?
Um, through the chair of the question, that, um, that is my understanding of the situation with the Jupa agreement.
Right. So this, this isn't developing a soccer pitch or a, um, you call it a play structure or a ball diamond on a school site, and us cost sharing that or paying for it in full, which we have in many places, in, at many times, on many locations. I know this because I did the work myself, isn't uncommon. Correct?
Through the chair, that would be correct.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Ball. Does any council have any questions for administration? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Elliot. Uh, for delegates, first we have Mark LeBonte. Just, uh, hit the light, Mark, and just introduce yourself. You have five minutes to present, and please remain seated for questions.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bowman. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark LeBonte. I'm treasurer for Conseil d'administration. And I'm here to speak in support of the proposed emerging issues reserve allocation and capital budget amendment enabling the relocation of the Calbarial to the Abrams Landing site. First and foremost, I want to thank the regional municipality of Wood Buffalo for enquiring collaboration with our school board. CSAN values strong partnerships with all municipalities where we operate schools, and we deeply appreciate the open dialogue with your administration that has taken place to date. We're very aware of the concerns expressed by the Abysan community, and we are, and we fully understand the challenges the neighborhood has faced since 2016 wildfire. While the Calbarial was not destroyed in the fire, it endured significant smoke damage and, like the rest of the community, has experienced hardship while operating through the community's rebuilding process. CSAN is grateful for the resoning approval granted on May 13th for future development in Abysan. The CSAN's original plan to develop in Abysan was through a lens of improving community amenities. It is through community feedback and a clear message was received that a new development in Abysan create much disruption and remind residents of the difficult reconstruction efforts, just as the neighborhood is starting to normalize after rebuilding. I want to emphasize that our intent was not only to build a school, but to contribute positively to the overall well-being of the Abysan and Frankphone community. If the RMWB votes in support of the proposed capital budget amendment, the CSAN will then be in a position to make a formal request to the Ministers of Education and Infrastructure to relocate a Calbarial to the Abrams Landing site. Once ministerial approval is received, we can move forward to implementing this collaborative solution. Since the Abysan rezoning approval, the CSAN has worked closely with the municipality to evaluate alternative sites. After a thorough review, we believe the Abrams Landing presents the most shovel-ready option with least number, uh, of barriers to timely development. We also acknowledge relocating the school will introduce both financial and timeline risks. Alberta Infrastructure and Alberta Education have clearly outlined the associated costs for design revisions and geotechnical assessments. These are real challenges, but the CSAN remains committed to minimizing delays and to working collaboratively, collaboratively with both the municipality and the province to mitigate impacts wherever possible. We know for this relocation to happen, the municipality's financial support is essential. The province has indicated that the project can remain eligible for federal funding, provided we stay within certain timelines. The CSAN is dedicated to doing its part to meet those deadlines and to preserve the full scope of the project, including the daycare spaces, which are vital too, for supporting Frankphone families. In closing, I want to reaffirm that the CSAN stands as a willing and active partner. We support the proposed emerging issues reserve allocation and capital budget amendment, and respectfully encourage council to approval, approve it, providing this important next step towards delivering a much-needed new school for forming more Frankphone community in Abrams Landing. Thank you for your time and continued partnership.
Thank you, sir. Uh, is any questions from council? Council Ball?
Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, you're, you're in support of this, and I think you can tell I am as well, but, um, I'd really like to talk about the benefits of this site over, um, the other site, like what partnerships do you anticipate formulating and, and just the land form alone and what it, what it potentially provides you, as far as a future?
Through the chair to Council Ball. Thank you kindly for your question. Firstly, I'd like to mention that prior to, um, prior to our May 13th, uh, council meeting, uh, we were not aware of the Abrams Landing site. Uh, and once it was presented to us, it, it showed a definite promise. Uh, of the three options, uh, that were presented earlier, uh, that was the one, uh, site that, uh, was shovel-ready out of the three that were, were suggested to us after the May 13th, uh, council meeting. Uh, the advantages we saw with that site was firstly, uh, the area itself was located favorably for the majority of the families that we currently have. You know, Timberley area is very large, and the majority of, uh, former residents live in that area. Uh, secondly, the site was a lot more open, more accessible, easier to construct in. Uh, we could see advantages there in terms of executing the construction of the school. The other advantage we saw was the new construction of Twin Arenas right next door. The Abysan, uh, uh, location, uh, was, is a wonderful location that we've been operating in for several, several years. And we're not opposed to continuing, uh, development in Abysan if, if council, uh, does not wish to, uh, pass this, uh, motion today. However, uh, by passing this motion, moving over to the Abrams Landing site, uh, provides the opportunity to, uh, maybe have access to the Twin Arenas. And those are the main drivers for the, for the request.
Thank you. And frankly, had you known of the Abrams, Abrams Land site when you began this process a number of years ago, would you have selected that over the, over the Abysan site? I mean, I see some benefits just relative to the construction in Abysan where you won't be exposing the students to a construction site right adjacent to your school that you're trying to operate as well.
Through the chair, to Council Ball, that is correct. Um, had we been aware of that site, uh, and I'm not sure whether that site was ever presented as a, as an actual school site. It is zoned correctly, but was it always planned as a school site? I'm not sure. However, if that was, uh, presented as a school site back when, uh, we were preparing our capital plan, it would have been an option we would seriously consider.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Ball. Uh, Council Grandison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I've got it off, just through the chair. Excuse me, don't mean to put you on the spot, but I am looking for clarity on a situation on one of the questions. So I've been told that you never asked, that the school board never asked. If you never asked, you're not going to find out. So this comes after the fact. Now, I don't know whether it was our responsibility to tell you in advance or whether it was your responsibility to ask, but if the question was never asked, it wouldn't have been an option in the first place. So was the question asked?
Through the chair to Council Grandison. Thank you kindly for the question. So when discussing potential school sites, uh, and with the municipality, and that's all usually done in collaboration with the, with all the school boards and municipality as once. Oftentimes, those discussion, uh, turn around what available school sites there are and what would be shovel-ready. In other words, when we present to, um, when we present our capital plans to Alberta Education, what we must present are shovel-ready sites, those that are ready for construction the very next day from the date that we are submitting our capital plan submission. Um, I am not aware, uh, that the Abrams Landing site has been presented to, to us as an option. Therefore, we, we weren't aware that that was an option for a school site.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. My question is, did you ask, what are all the available shovel-ready sites? So that you could have taken it to the province, whatever year you did that. That's my question.
Through the chair to Council Grandison. Uh, thank you for the question. So when we're discussing school sites with municipality, with the other school boards, we go through what is available for school sites. Even as recently as only, uh, a few months prior to the May 13th meeting, I did have a conversation with administration asking, you know, because of the pushback we're feeling from the Abysan community, we, we've heard some, we were aware that the Abysan community was struggling with our, with our proposal. I asked at that point if there was anything available. At that time, the answer was nothing that is shovel-ready today. Okay.
That's what I'm asking. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Then Council Grandison, uh, Council Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. Thank you, sir. Um, I asked a question earlier on about the timeline. We've lost about four, five weeks to your planning. So should we approve this today, then why are we losing, uh, 12 months? Given the impact this would have, and especially, um, that this could actually maybe affect some of the funding and grants. So in what way, uh, are we going to expect you to want to, uh, commit to, uh, support and be a partner in this process?
Through to the mayor, to Council Benjoko, thank you for your question.
Yes.
So the timeline, uh, the one-year timeline provided is an estimate, and it's a conservative one because there are a few other steps that we need to proceed to even, uh, make this a potential reality. And the first is obtaining ministerial approval. Generally, that process alone takes around three months. Uh, from the time that, uh, if approval was, was given, uh, we would, uh, send a letter out to the Minister of Education, including the Minister, uh, of Infrastructure as well, asking for their permission to move forward with these changes. So that there is, is the start of that timeline. Afterwards, there's the redesigning, uh, aspect of it. So Alberta in, infrastructure holds all the contracts with the design team currently. So the very first step that they would have to do only after they receive ministerial approval would be to obtain change orders from them in order to, uh, determine the cost of redesigning. So the, the redesign and our plan is to limit the redesign really to, um, the civil work that is what's underground, because we have to tie into the existing services that are on the site, right? That needs to be redesigned. That needs to be redesigned. We'd also have to redesign the landscape. So the landscaping is different, because it's an entirely different site. And we also have to redo the, you know, where the sidewalks go, where the parking lots would go, where the bus loop would go. So that gets redesigned as well. That's probably another two or three months, maybe even four. Because what happens is as we design, we go through those design changes, that a development permit gets submitted again to the municipality, and then feedback is needed from the municipality on that design. Maybe there's some design changes that need to occur, some tweaks in order to meet the municipality's design requirements. So there's quite a bit of work that's required there. It's time-consuming. But the reason why we're giving ourselves 12 months is because we want to make sure we do it right.
Okay.
We don't want to be rushed through that process.
Okay.
And by doing it-
Or it might not take 12 months.
It might not. If we're really on it and we're really doing, but realistically, 12 months is what we can expect.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bowman.
Thanks, Councilor Banjoko. Councilor Doger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me a chance. Thank you, presenter. Nice presentation. And I just want to reply a question. Honorable member asked why it was not shovel-in before, why it was not selected before. It is an ideal site that I see. In 2011 and 12, I had been working on this land-
Councilor Doger, do you have a question for the presenter?
You know, question, but you know, just adding to the-
No, we're now need a question of the presenter.
I will make the question.
Okay.
Eleven and twelve, it was hilly area and a lot of tons of earth was removed from here to airport side. So that was not the area, and that was not the area ready before. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilor Weigl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding that from the last presentation, just to be correct, the enrollment right now of the school is not an issue. We're looking at potential growth. And so the delay actually went to affect students in and in itself for the curriculum. We have enough space right now to continue all this new, if the new school is built in Abrams Landing, we still have sufficient space in the school right now for the current enrollment, I think is the question.
Through the chair to Councilor Will. Thank you kindly for your question. Actually, and that's a very interesting, I have an interesting answer to give you. And the reason why is, and the reason why we received approval for constructing the school is because of the programming restrictions we have due to the current building that we're in. Currently, we house to grade 10, but we do have grade 11 and 12 as well, which finish in another school. And delaying the project for a year, what it does, it essentially delays another year for which we can offer grade 11 and 12 programming within the school. Now, we are planning slowly on bringing grade 12 in anyways. So physically, the space is there. Just program-wise, it's not ideal, because there's no, you know, CTS woodshop, science labs, you know, those things that you would typically want to see for a high school. So that's what we're missing out on essentially for a year by delaying the project.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I can't even, can't read my writing. Can't, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Weigl. So, Councilor Cardinal, go ahead.
Thanks. You're the treasurer of the board?
Through the chair to Councilor Cardinal. That is correct.
Thanks. In this report, it says both departments have indicated that relocation would require the full-size financial report support of the RMWB. But no clear indication the amount. I'm just wondering how that arrives from the board?
Through the chair to Councilor Cardinal. Thank you for the question. The financial aspect of the relocation was borne or suggested by the province. When we were approached in order to look at alternative sites, and we looked at the Abrams Landing site, I then approached the province and explained that for relocation to occur, what does that mean for the province of Alberta? What does that mean for Alberta Education and Alberta Infrastructure? They, as mentioned previously, have invested considerable time and money in designing the current school in its current location. And what they've essentially asked was if we're looking to move the school over to Abrams Landing, that the additional costs associated with that would be borne by the municipality. Therefore, we then asked the question, what do those costs entail generally? And this is where they came up with the $1.3 million, which is the associated cost with redesigning, as well as the geotechnical surveying that would be required for the Abrams Landing site.
Thanks. I forgot your name. What was your name again?
Through the chair, it's Mark Labonte.
Mark Labonte?
Yes.
Do you believe that in your communications with Alberta Education and Alberta Infrastructure, that it would rely on them as a fiscal responsibility for education and infrastructure, not the RMWBs?
Through to the mayor, to Councilor Cardinal. We do rely on them entirely when it comes to our educational needs, when it comes to educating the children, when it comes to building our buildings. We do rely entirely on the Alberta government to help us with that. In this particular instance, we also worked with the Alberta government in order to obtain a federal grant for $10 million, and that's to add to daycare and community spaces for the Francophone community. So that, sorry-
Excuse me, that was what?
$10 million is what-
Can you speak a little closer into the microphone?
Yes, I can. I apologize. And so the province is committed to executing the school, the construction of the school, as they always have from the very beginning. And as it was originally planned for the community of Abisand, if we're to keep the school there where it is in the community of Abisand, there would be no change or no cost for the municipality in that case. The province was, is willing to work with us in order to relocate the school, if that is the will of the municipality. And they have asked that the municipality help in terms of covering the difference that would occur from what is currently planned and for what would be the cost of the of moving a school over to Abrams Landing.
So you say you've got a grade 10, grade 10 as far as you guys go up to grade 10? I guess so.
Our programming does go up to grade 12. However, what happens is because of the lack of programming that we have in our schools. We don't have CTS lab, science lab, et cetera. Those students are going to another school. It's a partnership with the public school board in order to finish their grade 12 in neighboring school.
How's that working?
It is, what happens unfortunately is because the students end up going there through our program over the time, they eventually, more often than not, don't always complete their education with Francophone. They end up registering through that school after a time being. There's actually quite a long history on that. And at one point in time, we were housing kids from grade 10, 11, and 12, and even some of the earlier grades as well. But as we're losing kids registering to the other program, rather than continuing on and graduating through the Francophone program, we've tried our best in order to increase the grade levels at the current old school that we're in now. And so we're slowly working there, increasing the grade levels so that eventually grade 12 can all be there. But unfortunately, as a result, you know, we can't offer the equivalent education programming as the other schools do currently.
Is that just because the school is too small?
This is because the school is inadequate for high school education. That is correct. Therefore, it is too small. The gymnasium size is not adequate for high school gym activities. And there aren't enough classrooms with the proper equipment, CTS and science labs to carry out equivalent high school programming, medical barial, which is the reason why we received the approval for the replacement school from Alberta Education.
For the Francophone students, when is the prime time to teach them their language?
Through the chair to Councilor Cardinal. I don't quite understand your question. I apologize.
When do you think is the best time? Is it, you've got one to 12, you say the program runs from one to 12, I mean, grades one to 12, K to 12, or whatever you want to say. In those years, when is the best time? Is it grade three, grade four, or is it grade seven, or is it grade 10? When's the best time that they learn? Because what I'm getting at is, why can't some of the students be moved to a different school?
Through to the mayor, to Councilor Cardinal, the best time actually to start educating your child to speak French is at birth. Education starts at birth to properly learn your language and culture that should be practiced from then on, which is why we received that federal grant for the daycare spaces, which are Francophone daycare spaces. And the community spaces that are also added to that school carry on to past grade 12. So learning French happens from birth, ideally. And K to 12 education offered by the government is what is absolutely needed in order to maintain and in order to preserve your Francophone heritage.
So you teach French rate to grade 12, then rate?
That's correct. Every course, and even within the hallways, everything is in French except for English class.
And what's the consensus of, you know, being able to coordinate with other schools to have other students get enrolled in their schools for that particular program?
And through the mayor, to Councilor Cardinal, your question's a good one. And the reason why Francophone education exists, or why Francophone school boards exist is because administering and executing the Francophone program is a guaranteed right through the Charter of Right and Freedom, Section 23. And so that right exists in order to preserve the Francophone language and culture within Canada. Therefore, partnering with other school boards in order to execute that instruction does not work, because control, to keep the French alive, to make sure that the French does remain within the classroom, needs to occur at the school board level. And that's best kept within the school board, within the French system.
Thanks. One more question, I guess, is how much money has been guaranteed by Alberta? First, I guess Alberta Education, secondly, Alberta Infrastructure.
Through the chair, to Councilor Cardinal. Thank you kindly for your question. So when capital project is approved, the project request goes to Alberta Education. Alberta Education is the ministry that is responsible for deciding whether or not a school project is approved. That goes through the Education Ministry. Once a capital project is approved, then it flows over to the Infrastructure Ministry. And Alberta Infrastructure and their department is then responsible for executing the delivery of that school. Therefore, the financial piece in terms of the construct, the design and the construction of the school is borne by the Ministry of Alberta Infrastructure.
You didn't answer my question. I asked you how much funds have been guaranteed by Alberta Education and Alberta Infrastructure?
The collective of the two, including the federal monies, is around $43 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Weigl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a quick question. Do you feel enrollment numbers would go up being in Abisand? Oh, sorry, being in Abrams Landing?
Through the mayor, to Councilor Weigl. I feel that there is a potential that enrollment may, it is difficult to know the answer to that question, to be honest with you. But enrollment may, it will not hinder enrollment by being in Timberley or at the Abrams Landing site, for sure. We feel that because of proximity to families, because there's more families closer to the school, it will likely encourage Francophone families to register with our school board.
Okay, thank you.
Then Councilor Weigl, Councilor Ball? Oh, I seen your lights off, Councilor Ball. Do you still have a question?
Yeah, I can ask you. It's just a quick one. I read in the report about the school board would be contributing dollars for the construction of the play structure after the school was built as basically a partner with the municipality. I can't recall what that number was. Was it $250,000? Is that right?
Through to the mayor, to Councilor Ball. That is correct. $250,000 grant is provided for any new school construction by Alberta Infrastructure, or sorry, that is Alberta Education. That is a grant through Alberta Education. So every new school which incorporates an elementary component is provided a $250,000 grant, for which we would, if the municipality is willing to partner, we would essentially provide those funds in order to enhance the current playground there.
Right, and it would be anticipated that the municipality would deliver the end product?
Through the mayor, to Councilor Ball. If the municipality is willing to partner in that one, yes, I would definitely would want the municipality to deliver the product as generally, you know, the operating and maintenance of the playgrounds is municipal responsibility.
Right, and yeah, it's something they certainly do take care of. No, I just, I was interested in that, because, you know, over the last number of years, any upgrades or additions to play structures or new structures built, the province has added zero dollars to all of them. The municipality has borne the cost of every one of them. So it's nice to see that there's a contribution coming from this development. Thank you.
Then Councilor Ball, Councilor Grandison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair. Going back to one of the answers that you've given already. So if this project is delayed by a year, the schools that your students are attending, grade 10, 11, 12, whatever, are also full, if I understand correctly, and already having a challenge. Moving this project delays it for another year. So you now are adding an additional year of pressure onto other schools, including your own. The man is the population you currently have, where if it was built in its current location, it would be a year quicker, and you would be accommodating all of those students and no longer disrupting these other schools with additional pressure of students. Is that correct?
Through to the mayor, to Councilor Grandison. As I mentioned previously as well, we are working on bringing in the grade 11 and 12s into Ekalbarial over the next couple of years. What is correct is that if we remain in Abisand, the school will be delivered quicker, because the design is complete, and we're essentially ready to apply for a construction permit after the contractor is selected. Alberta Infrastructure has not yet gone to tender for this project. But yes, essentially, if we remain in Abisand, the project will be delivered sooner than Abrams Landing. That is one of the considerations for council.
But again, only partially answered my question. My question is that right now, there's pressure on other schools that are also full to accommodate, and I appreciate that you're going to be bringing students back to Abisand. But as you said, that's in the next year or two. So that means that there's additional pressure for another year if this project is moved. That's essentially my question. There's still additional pressure on other schools and your students for an additional year, correct?
Through the chair, to Councilor Grandison. That is correct. There's still additional pressure that is there. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Grandison. And I have one last question. And just because it was kind of brought up earlier, do you have a development- Do you have a development permit right now for Abysan?
Mayor Bowman, we have applied for, the province has applied for development permit early, I believe it was in January or February. It has not yet been approved.
Thank you, thank you. There's no more questions for the delegate, we can move on to the next one. I don't see any, so thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Jesso. And Michael, if you could say your name for the record, you have five minutes to present, and please remain seated for questions. And I expect your presentation in French. Your mic's off, you're lucky.
I haven't spoke French since I was nine. It's in there somewhere. I just, I want to thank Council for bringing, for working with the French school. I think for Abysan residents, it was never about denying kids a school, it was about the fact that this footprint is so big, and it's smack dab in the middle of Abysan, taken away what is left of our parks. It's, it sucks that we're in this situation, really it is. I wish Abysan had more space, but unfortunately, it doesn't. I, I think it's a great idea that these kids get to go to Abrams Land, and they get access to all of the other cities supplied, buildings that they'll have access to. And I'm just want to thank you guys for working with them. It's, hang on. Just, just a couple of, oh, the notes are gone. So, one of the things was permitting. I believe it was Ken Ball who brought up that the actual footprint of this building at this point is too big for this space. So, how would this have ever gotten through permitting anyway, is what I was wondering? And there's still so many other questions. Ninety-seven percent of Abysan residents said they did not want this school in their, in that location, and that was ignored by the people who voted for you. And so, that's a question people want to, you know, questions or answers to. So, it's just a really frustrating situation, because I feel bad for those French kids, I wish they had the space, I wish they had the room, but unfortunately, they don't. But I really wanted you guys to take into consideration that even the building that they're building or proposed to build is only supposed to, from the last meeting, supply ten years of growth, and after that ten years, they're going to need a bigger building anyway. And from what I understand, the Francophone community in Canada is growing, so that growth will potentially come. So, we'd be essentially ruining Abysan's, the center park of Abysan for a ten-year commitment. It makes no sense. So, I just, I hope you guys all support this tonight, and we can keep Abysan, Abysand. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Do they have any questions for the presenter? I'm not seeing any, so thank you, Mr. Jesso.
No worries. Thank you.
Do we have any other delegates for this item? Can I have someone make the motion? Counsel Weigle?
I moved that a maximum of two million, am I on the, I'm sure, sorry. I moved that a maximum of two million three hundred thousand from the Emerging Issues Reserve be allocated for a funding agreement for Alberta Infrastructure's Echol Boreal K to twelve replacement school from Abysan Heights, Attachment one, to Abrams Land, Attachment two, with the municipality not assuming responsibility for any unknown risks associated with additional construction costs, tariffs, and/or federal grant funding. That administration be directed to enter into a lease agreement in accordance with S six seventy point one of the Municipal Government Act with the Conseil Scorel Centre, Nord, sorry about that, for three hectares of municipal land in Abrams Land for purposes of constructing and operating the Echol Boreal K to twelve replacement school, and that administration be directed to bring forward capital budget requests in future years estimated at two million three hundred thousand for a new soccer field, a new playground, and any road improvements necessary to accommodate the relocation of a Echol Boreal K to twelve replacement school from Abysan Heights to Abrams Land.
Thank Counsel Weigle, and thanks for the second, Counsel Ball. Counsel, have any other comments, discussion, or debate points? I will start off. I really think a new school in any neighborhood improves the quality of life for the people in that, in that neighborhood, just any new school at all. With that said, I know Echol Boreal is a different situation, a lot of the schools we have, there's a lot of talk around the table about French language, French language, but it's almost, it's a, it's a different, it's a culture, it's a different school, it's not a school, you can transfer one school to the next. My son attended Echol Boreal from K, from kindergarten, actually to grade six, then moved to Echol Dickensfield, then to Echol McTavish. And we talked about a few school, the presenter mentioned kids going from that's Echol Boreal to other public schools for that, and out of over two hundred students graduating from Echol McTavish, there was only about ten, probably less than ten, maybe fifteen students that actually maintained their Echol Boreal learning from Echol Boreal to McTavish. So, I think that culture's lost once moved to different schools, so I definitely am supportive of this school wherever it is. I think it's well needed in the community, that is, our Francophone population is growing as people come from other countries where Fr- where French is their first language. It's definitely something needed in the community. My question, actually I have a question for, may, I guess, the realtors and previous realtors on Council, like, does a new school improve the property value of a, of a neighborhood when you build a new high school in a, in a neighborhood? I don't know if Counsel Grantson or Counsel Bouzier could answer that?
I absolutely believe so, but it's relative to the people that want to go to that school. I moved to Abysan specifically to go to the French immersion at Father Beauregard. So, did that, was that part of my decision-making for buying a property in Abysans and the price I paid? Absolutely. I equally left Abysans when they moved my kid from there to Dickensfield. So, in my opinion, yes, it does. I don't have the facts to back that up at the moment, but based on that, that's all I can tell you.
All right, thanks, Counsel Grantson. Counsel Ball?
Thank you. Sorry, through the Chair. I'm obviously in support of this, and I think it's a win-win for, most importantly, the students, they'll get a much better facility that can last what seems like a lifetime and has expandability and, and a, and a future. It, it also satisfies the concerns of the Abysan residents. I certainly wish we took a different route to get here, but I do believe doing the right thing is the right thing, versus placing a Band-Aid on it and making it, and making it work. So, I will be supporting this. Thank you very much.
Thank Counsel Ball. Counsel Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. Certainly doing the right thing is the right thing to do, and I will be supporting this motion as well. It's unfortunate that we didn't have the full picture when this was brought to Council, and the board members also didn't have the full pict- full picture and full information. For the most part, I see that most residents and most of us are aligned to, and like Mayor said, having a consistent list of schooling from K to twelve for the French students. There might be a cost to this, as we have seen, but we can't put dollar figure to the trauma that the Abysan residents went through in twenty sixteen and the scare in twenty twenty-four. I don't live there, but I can only imagine. I would therefore support this, and I hope that we can move as quickly as possible so that we mitigate against, you know, further costs or ex, or increase to the estimated cost. In all, our cost for this school will be about ten percent of what Federer and the province would be contributing. They'll be putting down four point three, and hopefully at most, we'll be doing four point six. And so, for me, this is an example of what we need to do to justify that we hear the people when they speak, and we cater to the needs of the people. Thank you, so I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank Counsel Benjoko. Counsel Weigle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting this motion. I, I, I believe that there's, there's a continuous win here. The school, the, the school in itself sees the wins of being in Abrams Land, which is where we want to land. It's a win for the residents in Abysan, which creates a win-win. The biggest concern I've heard from residents is obviously the funding, but it's, it's good to know that the community has access to a lot of the facilities that'll be going in there, like the soccer field, and we'd be incurring the cost. So, those would be costs we'd be incurring down the road anyway. So, for me, it's a win all the way around. There is a small sacrifice, obviously, in the timeline, but the pros massively outweigh the cons, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank Counsel Weigle. Counsel Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. I have, I have issues with, with this myself financially. I feel that we could do, we can do better as RMWB in managing our money. I feel that we're not Alberta, we're, we're, they, Alberta has obligation to fund the schools entirely, it's not the RMWB's responsibility. I, don't get me wrong, language is obviously, obviously a culture, I won't, I'm not disagreeing with that, I don't disagree with the students having more students and learning more of their culture and their language. That's not, that's not why I'm making this choice, the reason why is because I feel that we, there are some gaps, I feel that Alberta's just pushed some of this stuff on us, as well as, you know, the, 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 the two, the two that the CSN, not the, the, yeah, the CSN in Alberta have just basically, you know, said that we got to fully fund the move, and I feel that if we were to fight a little more as a municipality and hold Alberta accountable a little more, whether it's with roads or, or anything, or the schools, or any, any stuff that's happening in this community, I feel that we're, we're, we've become Alberta, and it's the responsibility to actually build this school, just like they have any other. And with that being said, I, I, I won't, will not be supporting the motion just because I do not like the financial aspects and the financial, financial stuff, nor have I seen the funding agreement at any point, so I will not be supporting it. And this happens a lot, this happens way too much in this region where you just go ahead and spend money, and we do, we, we keep on spending and spending, and then Alberta and the feds are not, not responsible, not held responsible for the funding and the, the funding management of the regional municipality and the relationship that we have with them. So, I believe that we can do better. And, but, but that being said, I wish that, I, I hope that the, the students continue to excel in their language and culture, and I will not be supporting this motion because of the financial aspects of this all. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Cardinal. Counsel Grantson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the Chair. To start with, the first thing I'd like to talk about is the delay, that's one of my big issues, is the delay. And I understand how we got here, but we're here. And the delay concerns me, along with the added financial burden on the taxpayers. Those are my really big concerns. Now, a, a statement was brought up about, you know, use of the twin arenas, and so all schools have access to all our municipal buildings, they use busing to get there, they do that now, and if the school was still in Abysans, they'd do it then. So, none of that changes, a little bit more convenient, but let's not imply that those things aren't available, we have a baseball academy that goes down to the RSC all the time, many days a week, so that can be built into those programs, so let me get that part clear. Now, I really want to talk about, I one thousand percent support a school being put in Abrams Land, one thousand percent, for all of the positive reasons that have already been talked about. However, that didn't happen. Here we are now, after the fact, where now we're incurring greater costs, and nobody talks about those costs. So, here's the bottom line, we get money through taxes, and we keep hearing, oh, we're going to take the money out of merging issues. Where do people think the money comes from? It comes from taxes into merging issues, and merging issues is going down and down and down. And as we keep spending money without stopping spending money in other places, merging issue's going to disappear, and we're going to go back to borrowing money. And when we go back to borrowing money, where do we get money? We increase taxes. Nobody's talking about that, but that's what's happening right here, right now. This extra four point six million is going to come out of merging issues that every taxpayer pays for, but the goose that laid the golden egg, which is taxing industry, is now gone. So, those taxes can only come from us. We're not there yet, but we're going to keep getting there, and I take fiscal responsibility as my role as a counselor probably as serious as anything that I do. And this decision is going to affect future decisions, because what we didn't do, we're already spending more than we were collecting, right now, this day. We did this year, we did last year, we're probably going to do it next year. That money's all coming from the savings, which is dwindling, because the goose that laid the golden egg is no longer alive and well. So, I'm thinking about the future, too. And without moving, yes, it's going to disrupt some people's lives, yes, it's going to be challenging to a construction season, yes, we'll lose some green space, and I would challenge our administration to go find some more, if it's at all humanly possible, in Abysans to replace some of it, I think we could replace maybe some of it, I don't really have an answer to that question. But by not moving it, we save a minimum four point six million dollars, we do not disrupt other schools, we do not disrupt for an extended period of time, we're still going to disrupt them through the construction, but past that, we won't. And the new school in its current location will be able to handle the total population plus the perceived growth of the population. So, to me, we save five million dollars, we stop a year of disruption, we don't spend money we don't really have to spend, therefore, we don't look at raising property taxes to replace that money or go into debt when we run out of money. Those are my concerns, Mr. Mayor, with this. I can't support it from a fiscal, financial, responsible way, but in every other conceivable way, I wish we'd had this conversation three years ago, and they were already being done, because then Alberta would have picked up the tab. I also want to support my colleague, Hendrick, we are paying for dozens and dozens of things that the province is supposed to pay for, we're also paying for dozens and dozens of things that the feds are paying for, should be paying for, all because we used to have a goose that laid the golden egg, and we agreed to pay for everything just to get it done. We need it done, we'll pay for it. We need it done, we did land transfers, we lost all kinds of money because we were getting it from industry. We're not getting it, folks, from industry anymore, we're getting it from us. And for that reason, I can't support this motion, but for the actual reality, I really wish it had come into expression three years ago, and we weren't even here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Counsel Grantson. Counsel Ball?
Thank you, through the Chair, and I, I'd like to add that the school board themselves, the people who are going to operate the facility prefer the Abrams Land site, and, and if that's their preference, there has to be a reason why, and, and it's certainly why I support it. I did want to add one note that I wanted to thank Counsel Bouzier for bringing this site to mind, because it's not one I had thought of, but he did, so appreciate it, Lance, thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Ball. Counsel Weigle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I do, I do want to thank Counsel Grantson for bringing up the idea of fiscal responsibility, I think it's something that we need to talk about more and have a more education, we talked about it last week about, or our last meeting about budgeting and making sure that there's an understanding. We also, part of this for me is actually also listening to the tax base, where they're actually from the people. When we have ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of the people stating that they want this in that area, to me, that's, it's also, it's also responsible for us to actually follow the will of the people, of who we also represent. And so, for me, this wasn't a, a minor edge, this was ninety-seven percent was a massive edge, and, and, and a huge call from the people what they want. And so, for me, when the school board wants it and feels it's better, and the people massively want this, to me, it's also important to actually spend the money the way the people want, not necessarily the way that we want. And so, for me, that's massively important. And so, for me, that's why I will continue to support this.
Thank Counsel Weigle. And Counsel Grantson, is your light on again, or is it just left on?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Grantson.
Partially to respond, because I think Counsel Weigle is, is, is- Partially to respond because I think Council Weigl is, is, is correct. Here's the only problem, that 90% of those people, if you ask them the exact same question, are you willing to pay the $5 million in property tax increase? And ask them the same question. Anybody's gonna want anything, including me, if it doesn't cost anything. But if they knew it was gonna cost, would it still be 97% or would it be 7%? That, that's the answer I don't have. I agree the will of the people, they want something, but they want something without cost because there's no consequence to it. Positive, the only consequence is positive. There may be negative consequences, and when we make decisions, we should make them based on all of the information, not just half of it. I believe they've only got half the information. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Grandison, uh, Councilor Doger. I think you're on mute, Council Doger.
Can't see him either.
Uh, we can see him, we just can't hear him.
Oh, so it was, it was mute, sorry. Uh, you know, it was muted. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Surely we have to respect the will of the people. Sorry, I missed last time, uh, this important aspect. Surely I am for this motion. You know, education takes the priority and also the will of the people. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Council Doger. Senator Council, any other, uh, comments, debate points? Uh, I'm not seeing any, so I'll call for vote. In favor? Council Doger, you turned your camera off.
Sorry, it was by mistake.
Are you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
And against? Council Grandison, against, thank you. And that's carried with seven in favor. Thanks, everyone. Uh, right now, council will take a 15-minute break, and we'll be back at 6:20.
Welcome back, everyone. Next, we have the report on the 2026 Community Investment Program Funding Priorities. I'd like to invite Community Services to introduce their report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Toni Elliott, Acting Director of Community Services, and with me is Janelle Flurry, Manager of Community Partnerships and Initiatives. We are here to recommend the 2026 Community Investment Program Funding Priorities. As outlined in the CIP policy, FIN 220, Section 2.1.2, it is Council's responsibility to set funding priorities considering community needs and outcome measurements from previous years. The proposed 2026 funding priorities are grounded in Council's strategic plan, other Council-approved plans, including the newly adopted municipal development plan, and outcome measurements reported to CIP for the 2024 grant year.
The recommended 2026 funding priorities are: partnership and collaboration, rural and indigenous communities and relationships, social participation, community support services and wellness, value of culture, heritage, and regional pride, accessibility, inclusion, and belonging, and hosting events and/or new businesses and visitors. Overall, administration is proposing few changes to the 2026 funding priorities. This approach enables strategic investment and maturity of outcome measurements with one notable refinement: the evolution of the priority diversity, inclusion, and accessibility into the priority accessibility, inclusion, and belonging. We believe this supports a more actionable approach to creating inclusive communities. Belonging is achieved through the practices of creating spaces where every person feels recognized, respected, and connected within the community they call home. Each Council-approved plan that informed the funding priorities was developed through comprehensive community engagement processes. In addition, the proposed 2026 funding priorities considered outcome measurements submitted by CIP-funded organizations, which provide valuable insights into their impact while reinforcing and refining funding priorities. Lastly, the evolution of accessibility, inclusion, and belonging was recommended by the Community Investment Program Approval Committee, reflecting community conversation and local expertise.
There is great value in annually reviewing and approving the funding priorities to ensure that they are staying relevant to community needs. Together, these priorities reflect the voices of the community, the data from outcome reports, and the vision set by council. They represent both continuity and alignment with council's strategic direction and community-identified needs. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? I'm not seeing any, so thank you both very much. Do we have any delegates of this item?
We have no delegates for this item, thank you.
Can I still make the motion? Counsel Benjoko?
Thank you, Ms. Samuel. I move that the 2026 Community Investment Program CIP Funding Priorities, as outlined in attachment one, be approved.
Thanks, Counsel Benjoko, and thank you for the second, Counsel Bousier. Any other discussion, debate points, or comments from council?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counsel Benjoko.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman, and thank you for all the works that went into this review and changes that you are proposing. I would like to openly commend the change of strategy or improvement in our strategizing around accessibility, inclusion, and belonging. Diversity has been used numerous times and for years, but diversity is what already exists. We can do anything about it. I look different from a lot of people and, you know, vice versa, but intentionally going after improving accessibility, inclusion, and belonging, I think, is a commendable step. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Counsel Benjoko. Any other questions, comments, or debate points from council? Not seeing any. I'll call for a vote. In favor online?
In favor.
Thank you, Counsel Grannison. In favor, Counsel Dogar. Thank you. That's carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have Bylaw Number 25/018, Chief Administration Officer CEO Bylaw, which is being presented for the second and third reading tonight. Like to invite Legal Services to introduce their report, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Patrick White from the Municipal Legal Council from Legal Services, and I am here this evening to present a proposed CAO bylaw. I'm going to talk very briefly on the history of our CAO bylaw, talk about how we revised it in this time around, and then highlight some of the major changes. I'm not going to go over line by line, in essence, for varying time. So, the last major revision of our CAO bylaw took place in August of 2017. There was a minor revision in November of 2020. In March of '25, the administration presented a comparative analysis from CAO bylaws from across Alberta to council, and after that presentation, council expressed an interest in working with administration to revise its CAO bylaw, which brought us here today. So, members of administration had one-on-one discussions with members of council. Every councillor had a opportunity to participate, and we conducted over 20 hours of meetings in April and May to come to today's presentation. So, on to our major changes. We have a few of them. First would be on acting and interim CAO, also reporting to council, financial matters and land matters. So, the first one, this generated a great deal of discussion, and so I wanted to spend a little extra time on it. Council can or will appoint the CAO when the position is vacant. It would either be a full-term CAO or an interim CAO, as we have right now. And then the question is, when the CAO position is filled, so we have someone there, and there is an absence, so a vacation or so, less than three weeks, the CAO can appoint whoever they wish, a fellow employee, to act as an acting CAO. Then we come into where the absence will be greater than three weeks. Currently, in the bylaw, in Section 10, council may appoint an acting CAO, or they can allow the CAO to do it themselves. So, it's currently a discretionary. Council may do it, or they may allow the CAO to do it. There was some discussion as to whether or not council wanted only them to have the authority, and I will leave that up for your debate. So, moving on, we have reporting to council. Right now, it's done rather informally. Currently, in the proposed bylaw, it is much more formal. It's done on a semi-annual basis. It can be done either through a presentation, like tonight, or through an email at the request of council, and it's on areas such as capital projects, land sales, litigation, collective bargaining, or any issue that council wishes to have a presentation on. They are not limited to those listed within the bylaw. This is a financial matters. This mirrors our current FIN 160 policy. So, council approval is needed whenever a CAO wishes to cancel a capital project that's already been approved, or start a new capital project that's not in the budget, start a new program, project, or service from the approved operating budget, or to reallocate within the operating budget in a way in which service levels are reduced. So, for example, taking a large chunk of money from corporate services and then moving it over to public works, which would affect our ability to handle the taxes when we have to do tax assessments. That would be an example. Another significant change is how we're going to handle land sales from now on in the proposed bylaw. The appraised market value is key to all the transactions. Every single purchase and sale requires an appraised market value. Council approval is going to need, when it's a non-residential parcel in the urban service area, where the value of that parcel, based on that appraised market value, is greater than $1 million. Council approval for leases will also be required where it is greater than 25 or where the rent is not fair market value. Earlier this evening, we talked about a slow-pitched softball and how they were going to get a lease on the concession stand, and the reason why council had to approve that is because the lease was from a nominal value and not market rent rate. So, that's why council approved that. This also, when a parcel is appraised at greater than a million, so it's also, it's not just the sale, but it's conditions, waiving conditions, anything that has to do with an agreement. Once that value is greater than a million, council approves, or if the value is less than a million, but there's an attempt to sell it for less than market value. So, for example, selling a parcel of land for a nominal rate to a nonprofit, council would have to approve that. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Do we have any questions for presenter? Counsel Bousier?
Thank you, Mayor, through the chair to Patrick. Thanks for the presentation and your work on this. A couple of questions. The land matters. If it's, he said, if it's in excess of a million, council, needs council approval. What happens if the land is pending? Who controls the terms and conditions, extensions and all that?
Through the chair to the question. So, if the, if the value is greater than a million, or that it's being sold or purchased for less than either 10% above appraised market value, or 90%, depending on if it's a purchase or sale, that's when council is triggered. But the CAO can always bring a land sale to council if they wish to. This gives them the authority to, or to use their discretion. So, if you're talking about conditions or anything that's outstanding, whenever a council has to approve the sale or purchase, they would also approve all of those other things.
Okay, so if, if there's, like, we have a number of parcels under that master land agreement, so any of those, oh, I think most of those, if not all of them, are over $1 million. So, council at the time will accept the offer when they come in. But after that, if the purchaser wants to close on maybe only a portion, or not all of it, will that come back to council? Or is that left in the hands of the CAO?
That would come back to council. Once council is, is required to have approval for one part of it, they have to approve all of the parts. So, for example, if it's a, we have, I believe, a large parcel left from the master land agreement, which is valued at, like, say, $7 million, and let's say, developer, which is to only develop half of that, that other half still has to go back to council. So, we have previous deals in which that has not been the case. This proposed CAO bylaw would not allow that previous land deal to happen without council approval.
Okay. Legal matters. Obviously, you don't want the CAO coming back for, and I'm just speaking to uninsured litigation. We obviously don't want a CAO, he or she, to come back for every settlement. In your bylaw, what was it, was it half a million?
Through the chair to the question. Yes, it is, for those of you following along, Section 37 Sub D, yes, it is $500,000.
Okay. And how did we arrive at that number?
To be quite honest, it seemed reasonable, although from a legal perspective, it is low. We would prefer it to be at $1 million. We do have some, it does tie our hands when we are attempting to negotiate things, so 500 is a bit low, but it seemed like a reasonable amount, but administration would prefer to be, it would be a million.
Okay. What about severances?
Well, through the chair. For the most part, severances, some of them can be insured, and it kind of depends on whether or not we, it's covered under our wrongful termination insurance coverage.
So, under the current, under the current bylaw, Patrick, the CAO, he or she, would negotiate if, if an employee was terminated with or without cause, that would, even though there's money involved, it doesn't matter how much the severance is or the settlement is, that would strictly be under the CAO, under this bylaw or the previous bylaw?
Through the chair to the question. Under the current bylaw that's in force right now, the CAO has the ability to negotiate severance or any other settlement for any dollar amount, but they have to inform council when it is greater than a million. For this bylaw, severances would be included within the $500,000. So, if a severance was greater than that, then they would have to get council approval. We would be able to perhaps do, do it in such a way like we do mandates, whereas we could come to a closed session. We would speak all of the particulars and then seek a mandate of how much we could settle up to, and then that could be used that way.
Okay. I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Bousier. Counsel, Counsel Benjoko, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. Thank you for the presentation. And look, we've discussed this before briefly, the acting CAO conditions. In the absence of the CAO for over three weeks, we still have council may appoint acting CAO or allow CAO to do it. That doesn't tell me much, because it's like, who, who is responsible here? It's not clear court, and is there any way we can tidy this up a little bit? Or what are you trying to say? Council may appoint or allow CAO? Please clarify.
Through the chair to the question. Yes, so council may appoint after, if the absence is expected to be greater than three weeks, say, for instance, we're, we're dealing with a long-term illness or something of that nature, where the CAO may not be back in the near future, council may appoint an acting CAO. It is, in that scenario, it's more likely than not that the CAO has already appointed someone, and they're just taking it extended, at which point council then, through, through their own deliberations, could decide, let's keep the person that is already in the chair to stay there, or council may decide through their own deliberations that they wish to appoint someone. The, Section 10 gives council that ability to make that decision, either way.
Okay. Council may appoint or allow? So, we're, council receives the right, either way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Benjoko. Does Counsel have any other questions for administration? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Patrick. Do we have any delegates of this item?
We have no delegates. Thank you.
Can someone make the motion for the second reading? Counsel Benjoko?
I move that bylaw Number 25/018, being a bylaw to establish the position of the chief administrative officer be read a second time.
Thanks, Counsel Benjoko, and thank you for the second, Counsel Bousier. Does Counsel have any other debate points or comments? Counsel Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. Through the chair to presenter. Thanks for bringing us forward again, and I think, I guess, you know, big thanks to just taking the time to, you know, reach out to all the counselors and get everybody's input and showing, showing regard for the CAO bylaw. But first and foremost, I guess I'd just like to acknowledge that, you know, the new bylaw changes reflect on our, our, what's the word I'm looking for, our concern regarding some of the actions that have taken place previously and, you know, kind of ways cracking down a little bit on some of the, some of the restrictions on the CAO as well, so. And I guess in the future, we'll hopefully raise that to a million when actually, when we start to actually, you know, getting a hold of our finances and starting pulling the staff together and starting, starting to have this organization, you know, have a great uplift and, you know, have a leader that, that's the CAO and hopefully that we don't have no finicky, funny stuff that happens anymore along the way, so. And I'm accustomed to making sure that that's, that's played out and appreciate the hard work from yourself and appreciate the counselors that they have taken the time to actually sit with you guys and sit with administration and take the time to take this seriously. And the indication, the indications from previously, previous, that previously through the last three years have been, been a, been a real struggle, not only from, from us, from our end, but also from the community's perspective and how, you know, we continue to just spend, 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 take, 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 and fraud, 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 and it's, it's, it's kind of consumes a person and it's kind of, it shows our sour taste in the community. And I think that this bylaw and pulling some of it back would show clear indication that we're serious and we want to be able to hold people accountable and move forward with resilience and a little bit of restriction as well. So I appreciate you taking the time and thanks to the counselors as well.
Thanks, Counsel Cardinal. Do we have any other comments, debate points or discussion from council? Not seeing us call for a vote, so online in favor?
In favor.
Thank you, Counsel Grandison. Is that in favor, Counsel Dogar?
Yes.
Thank you. That's Attorney Adams. Thank you, everyone. Can someone make the mo, the motion for the third reading? Counsel Weigle?
Thank you. I move the bylaw number 25/018 be read a third and final time.
Thank you, Counsel Weigle. Thanks for the second again, Counsel Bousier. Final times, any debate, discussion points or comments from council? Counsel Dogar?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, presenters, for putting a lot of input and also Counsel Lance Bousier for taking keen interest. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counsel Dogar. Any other comments, debate points or discussion from council? I just want, I'd like to thank, actually, Counsel Bousier for the questions you asked tonight. It clarified a lot of things, I think, for a lot of people on what this bylaw is all about, as well as thank administration for all the work they did, they put in, meeting with each council individual to go through this whole bylaw and this whole process. So, Counsel Ben Joko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Counsel Odoga. I think he was the first person that brought this forward. Thank you.
We'll call for a vote. In favor online? Thank you, Counsel Grandison. Thank you.
In favor.
Counsel Ben Joko, do you have a vote? And that's Attorney Adams. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have the report in the Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo development tourism subsidiary grant.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tony Elliott, Acting Director of Community Services, and presenting with me is Janelle Flurry, Manager of Community Partnerships and Initiatives. We're here to present Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo Economic Development and Tourism's request for funding through the CIP subsidiary corporations grant program. Typically, the RMWB subsidiary corporations request funding during the annual operating budget proceedings. However, as council was restructuring the board and organization in 2024, they did not submit a grant application for 2025. Since the new board's appointments, the organization has approved annual budget and reached out to the RMWB to initiate the application. This is allowable under the CIP policy because subsidiary corporation grants are approved by council, placing them outside of the CIP core grant cycle. The 2025 grant request is for $3.8 million. This represents a reduction of $590,000 from their approved grant in 2024. The application identified that the savings were a result of a reduction of full-time employees, reducing redundancies, and reducing external contracts and sponsorships. The current slide depicts a summary of the request of their 2024 financial information. These figures were provided by Economic Development in the application for funding. It's important to note that the 2024 audited financial statements were not finalized before the application was submitted. At the time this presentation was submitted for the agenda, we had not been able to verify the previous year's financial information section. I'd also like to point out, there's a little error on this slide. The request for $3.8 million represents an 85% subsidy, not the 65% as noted on slide. Since the time that the agenda was published, Economic Development has submitted their financial sta, their draft financial statements for 2024. The current slide depicts a summary of expenses for the 2025 grant request. The budget as presented in the application does not separate out salaries and wages for the 16 employees. Instead, these costs are rolled into the program costs and overhead categories. The draft financial statements for 2024 identify that salaries, wages and benefits were approximately $2.7 million. Also included in program costs are expenses associated with their various initiatives or pillars, including investment attraction, tourism, entrepreneurship and innovation, and brand and marketing. Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo Economic Development and Tourism have identified six programs that require municipal funding support. They are business retention and expansion programs, which includes workforce development and startup YMM; innovation support programs, which includes the Wood Buffalo Regional Innovation Network; tourism development programs, such as destination marketing and sport tourism; strategic initiatives, or what we would refer to as marketing and communications. This includes various marketing campaigns, like the Place brand assets; business and investment attraction programs, which includes efforts to diversify the economy; and workforce development programs in the region. An example of this is the Regional Labor Market Committee. The impacts of these programs include hosting new events and/or business and visitors, partnership and collaboration, and relationships with rural and indigenous communities, which align with CIP's funding priorities. Lisa Sweet, CEO, and Terry Cooper, other representatives of the organization, are available this evening to answer any specific questions council has related to the expenses, programs, and impact of this grant funding. The information presented this evening reflects the subsidiary corporation grant request. However, as noted earlier, the organization has not submitted the final version of the 2024 audited financial statements, which is an outstanding reporting requirement. Though the draft financial statement has been obtained, the administrative recommendation is that their funding requests be denied or deferred after the final statements have been received and analyzed to adhere to the CIP policy. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Quick question, where it's recommended be denied, if the financial statements were, were put, if you had to approve financial statements from the board, would that be, would that have changed the recommendation?
Through the chair to coun, or through the chair to the mayor, yes, it would have changed the recommendation. They'd be in compliance with the reporting requirements.
Perfect. Thank you. Does Counsel have any other questions for the administration? Counsel Weigle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Do you have a proposed timeline for the audited financials?
Through the chair to Counselor Weigle, I was speaking with the CEO, Lisa Sweet. She believes that they'll be signed and approved by July 8th, but I would defer that question to her when she's up presenting.
Okay. And originally, this was to be brought up on July 8th, right? So they would have been ready for the July 8th meeting, but we moved it back?
Through the chair to Counselor Weigle, that's what we've been told, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Weigle. Counsel Cardinal, question for administration?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Out of the, out of the $34 million, how much of that was wages or since 2018, July 5th?
Through the chair to Counsel Cardinal, are you referring to the, how much in the $3.8 million?
Well, since the total spend, since we spent 2018, July 5th, since it was incorporated.
Oh.
I know that we've spent $34 million to date on Actv, and I just want to know the number for the wages spent out of that $34 million.
Through the chair to Counselor Cardinal, I don't have that number right in front of me. I do know that in the beginning, when they were just the, Fort McMurray Tourism, the cost to operate was a lot lower, so the wages would have changed year over year. As we mentioned in the presentation, for 2024, the audited financial statements that are in draft tell us that about $2.7 million were put to salaries and wages, and the budget is fairly consistent over the last few years, so we may make an assumption that it's similar, but I don't have the data in front of me.
Okay, I'll wait for that, for that information to be emailed to me, please. But I guess, secondly, I wanted to ask, why, 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 okay, besides, besides the reporting policy for Actv to adhere to, what, what would be another implication, why wouldn't approve the funding?
Through the chair to Counselor Cardinal, when we have the final audited financial statements, we'll be able to conduct a thorough review that would tell us if there is any other reasons that this would not be recommended that fall within the policy, such as other reasons that they would be ineligible.
Okay, maybe, I don't know if this would be for Actv, but where, where does the truth and reconciliation commission calls to action come into play for Actv?
Through the chair to Counselor Cardinal, I believe that they, the organization would be in a better position to answer that question. I know that in their application, they speak to working with indigenous and rural communities on tourism development and building relationships, but they have a better answer to that question.
Have they, have they implied a, a budget for that particular scenario, particular request?
Through the chair to Counselor Cardinal, within their application, I'm just going to pull up the page here. It's not broken down on this slide, but, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but they had asked for program expenses and overhead, and that falls under those categories. So program costs and overhead is where the various pillars that I mentioned are funded. So when Economic Development presents, I believe they're registered as a delegate, they have a breakdown of all of their funding requests.
Okay, I'll leave, I'll leave that asked for Lisa and Terry. That's all I have for now. I'll just review my little notes here, sorry.
Thanks, Counsel Cardinal. Counsel Bousier?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair, thanks for the presentation, ladies. What was the rationale given for not having the audited statements?
Through the chair to Counselor Bousiers, they had been undergoing the forensic audit, and the auditor had not finalized the 2024 financial statements until that was completed.
What's the year end? January to December?
Through the chair, yes. Their year end is December 31st.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Bousier. Any other questions for administration? I'm not seeing any, so thanks, Janelle. Thanks, Tony. Delegates, we have Wood Buffalo Economic Development, Lisa Sweet and Terry Cooper. Whenever you're ready, just introduce yourselves, you're good.
Mr. Mayor, counselors, my name's Terry Cooper. I'm the Chair of the Board of the Wood Buffalo Economic Development Corporation. We have, aside from Counselor Cardinal and CEO Butts, who are board members as well, we have six board members here, three in person, the others appearing by, I guess it's Teams or WebEx or whatever you have. We have three of our staff here today as well. I'm not going to go through and introduce them all, because then I'd run out of my five minutes and that would all, you'd hear from me. For some reason, so last year, when, before the new board was appointed by this council, you were running this corporation. You decided, for some reason, not to put in an application for funding. We had audited financial statements for the year that would have been relevant for that funding application, and those audited financial statements have been provided. I guess it maybe makes sense that you decided not to do any funding application because you didn't know what you were doing with the corporation, but then you decided to go forward. But you decided to go forward and you pointed us, as a new board, and I think it was the very next day, you ordered a forensic audit, which meant our auditors could not complete their audited financial statement based on auditing rules until your forensic audit was finished. Our auditors got access to your forensic audit Friday, last Friday. We have not been sitting on our hands, doing nothing. We've been ready to go. We got that. We have the financial statements. We have a board meeting set to review with our auditors the financial statements and hopefully approve that. That's Monday, and we were supposed to be before you on July the 8th. I think that's pretty damn fast, folks. You appointed us, January was our first board meeting, I appeared with, in front of you within two weeks, and I told you in camera that we understand our obligation to manage your taxpayer money properly. I indicated that I'd reviewed your interim audit, and it showed that we weren't following all those rules, and it was going to change, and that's what we've been working on. You told us, within 90 days, come back with a plan of how you're going to fix things. We couldn't come back in 90 days because you don't meet every day. We came back in 92 days. We presented the plan to you. The plan included focusing on a number of areas. We slimmed down our staff, so we have in our org chart 16 full-time employees. We don't have 16 full-time employees right now. We've lost some employees. We've lost some employees because some of the employees don't know if they're going to have jobs, because you guys fired the board and fired the CEO and caused a little bit of havoc. And now we're in the process of recruiting. Now, why do we want to recruit? We want to bring in someone to work on tourism. We want to promote indigenous We want to promote Indigenous tourism. We want to promote local tourism. But most importantly, we want to set up a destination marketing organization, which the province is telling us, if you want our tourism money, you better get this organization set up. The province is telling us, conservatively, they figure that once we're up and running, that's going to generate about $2 million a year. $2 million a year coming from the hotel industry that they're taxing on the visitors so that we can use that money to expand the visitor economy. We need money to be able to hire people to do that job, folks, okay? I know there's a motion that's going to come up next week where someone wants to say, let's shut down this business. Okay, that's fine. We're going to be back next week and we're going to talk about it. But let's talk about the dollars and cents. Let's talk about fiscal responsibility. We've got five vacancies. We then passed a motion that says, okay, the vacancies aren't going to be filled with full-time employees getting the kind of benefits that city employees get. Do you realize that the add-on to a city employee's wages for the benefits is about 35%? 35%? So we looked at what they're doing in Lethbridge, and they have a lot of their staff hired on a contract basis. So that's what we're going to do. And so consequently, our budget going forward for this year, if we can hire those five employees, I think we started as of June, so we won't be exactly to that, that amount. But with all the benefits, it's going to be about $2 million. It was about $2,750,000 last year, Counselor Cardinal. It was $2.9 million plus or minus the year before. So we're trimming down our staff. Why? Because you told us, we want you to refocus. And we came back, we said, well, this is how we're going to refocus. And no one said, you got it wrong. We don't want you doing that. What we're trying to do, we, I've, I've listened here as people are talking about spending money. The well's running dry. What are we about? We're trying to create an expanded tax base. We're trying to put in programs that are going to bring people to this community, to live in this community. We're trying to work with industry to convince them that they should be able to have people living in our community even if they have to bus into a camp. These are all things that we want to do, but you know what? Our biggest and our best resource is our people. And without those people, you don't get economic development. You don't get an expansion of the tourist, tourism industry. And so therefore, it would not be unusual to have your main resource cost to be at 50 or 55%. Our budget this year is going to put it in about 46% of our total. In the presentation, I saw it didn't include the grants that we're getting from other sources, but that's another thing we get to do. No one gives you guys money to put on a program.
I have to stop you, Terry, and hopefully not come up in questions, but I actually went over two minutes just because I was listening.
Okay.
So I do apologize.
Good thing I didn't introduce everybody.
Yeah, we would definitely add a time.
I'll shut up.
No, 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 I don't want you to shut up. But I may have some questions that weren't answered in, in your, in your presentation. Counselor Majoko, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman, and thank you for, for your presentation and speech. Thank you. My question is, so if, if this meeting was to happen on July 8th, you would have, you would have met the requirements?
That's, that's, that was it. We were supposed to meet on July the 8th. We could not, our, our forensic auditor gets the, we get the forensic audit last Friday. We get our, we now have the statement. We have to meet with the board. The board has to approve it, and they've told us, we're going to meet on Monday. They're going to have it signed off on the Tuesday. Unless, of course, the board says, we don't like these financial statements. What about this? What about that? But nothing in the forensic audit impacted the findings of our auditors. They were just waiting. And I don't know why it took, I had a debrief with the forensic auditors long before our auditors got the forensic audit information. I don't know what the delay was, but it wasn't because we were lax. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Majoko. Counselor Grandison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the Chair. Good evening, Terry. Terry, can you talk about the grants you're getting from other sources, please?
Yeah, I'm just going to look at the cheat sheet they gave me. We have money coming in from, where do I have it? Here are my revenue. We've got money coming in from tourism, and that's, yeah, I'll...
Hi, Counselor Grandison. Through the Chair, through, to Counselor Grandison. For 2025, we are getting just over $600,000 in grants, and they come from both federal and provincial government. So through the federal government, we get through the foreign direct investment grants, so we can do business and investment attraction. We get money from Alberta Innovates to do our regional innovation network. We get various grants from the province for workforce and some of our business retention and expansion. So some of the startup programs, startup WAM programs. And like Terry said, we do get money from, for tourism as well. So of our total budget, which is $4.428 million, we're requesting 3.8 from the municipality, and the other 600 odd thousand is from grants that we've had approved for this year.
So, thank you, Lisa. I'm assuming that these funders are satisfied. Having written grants in the past and stuff, I'm assuming these funders are satisfied with the presentation and the service that you're trying to provide and the delivery, or you would not be getting those grants. Is that a fair statement to make?
Through the Chair, through, to Counselor Grandison, you are correct. Every year that we've been in operation, we've received grant funding of this amount or more. And every year, those funding, we have to report back, very thorough, sorry, can you guys hear me? Really thorough reporting back on that, and we report back every year, and they are satisfied. If they weren't satisfied, they wouldn't be continuing to give us grant money every year. So to answer your question, it's yes.
Yeah, so I can appreciate that. Now, all of this stuff, so all of the money that we've gotten in the past, that's all been now subject to an audit and a forensic audit. And everybody says, let's move forward, like, we, we know the picture. The picture's clear. We've had a forensic and an audit. The picture's clear. So obviously, the province and the funding sources are all satisfied. Everybody's satisfied. We're just at a point where timing, because we asked you to do things, we appointed you, we requested the forensic audit, we didn't apply for the grant. So we've kind of created the problem that we're faced with right now. Had that not happened and economic development was running, we would be in a very different situation. Is that correct?
That would be correct, in, in my opinion. And today, we're not asking you to carte blanche approve our application. We're not, we're, we're saying, we're going to have the audited financial statements to you Tuesday, and so we'd like the approval conditional on us providing you with the audited financial statements.
Okay, thank you very much for the answer.
Thanks, Counselor Grandison. Counselor Doger? Counselor Doger, you're on mute again.
Sorry, sir, sorry, sorry. I apologize.
No worries, go ahead.
Thank you for giving me opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mr. Cooper, for coming over and helping, very, doing very, very important job. And we are grateful that very high-profile people are helping this economic development. You are absolutely right. On the very first day, we were overspending and we fired the president, I pointed out there and then. And sorry, with this change, you want that, you want it to slim it out, your organization or increase the number?
We are decreasing the number of full-time employees. I believe the, the org chart, that was the prior org chart, has with 23 full-time employees. On one of the forums I saw, I think we're up to 27 at one point in time.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Counselor Bousier?
Yes, thank you. Through the Chair to Lisa. What were the grants the previous years?
Through the Chair, through, to Counselor Bousier. The, the grants in previous years, we consistently get similar grants. They could be for various, like, different amounts. And they're often project-based. So, for example, we can work through the, you know, for various labor market study, for example, and different strategies of, of workforce. And then we're on to different programs. This year, we've gotten approval to do a, an engagement study with the business community. We often do that, we call it a business visitation program. So it depends on basically what the community needs are each year. But every year, for example, we do get the Alberta Innovates Regional Innovation Network grant. That's usually around $245,000 a year. But every single year, we have to put forward a budget of what we're going to do with that money. And that money in particular, it's not just us. We're kind of like the stewards and, and we chair that committee for our region. However, there's a bunch of community partners on that. That actually makes the decision of what the budget's going to be, Alberta Innovates being one of them. Pathways Alliance is on there. The Chamber is, is on there. I can, I can look, but just, there's community partners that are involved in it as well. We're just the stewards of that.
Okay, so since, since...
So Counselor Bousier, through the Chair to Counselor Bousier. So again, on the cheat sheet that they've given me, we are budgeting $628,000 for grants this year. Last year, this says we had $558,470. The year before, $1,304,748. The year before that, $889,983. $2,021, $675,243. 2020, there's a little asterisk there, because it says, some variance, but that was $658,000 and change. What, what we want to do moving forward is, I'm, I'm advised that one of the grants, some of the grants that are out there are like three-year programs. Lethbridge currently has three full-time staff hired on a three-year grant program. We want to be able to have the ability to do that, okay? We couldn't do that last year because no one knew whether everyone's going to be lined up for pink slips, okay? Can't even do it this year until we get by next Tuesday, find out what you guys want to do, okay? But that's what we want to do, because economic development is not quick turnaround. It's not, go out there today and you're going to bring 500 people into the community. We need to do some long-term planning, and we want to get some of that long-term grant money because we can then do that leveraging. That's part of our plan. So we're here to get some money. Currently, you know what? Our credit's good because you guys have been paying our bills. You know, so if you approve our budget, we're just writing a check to give you back the money. If you don't approve our budget, then I guess we're bad debt, hey?
Well, and again, I mean, obviously, you and your team have only been there for five months, but it's been eight years. And it's just, in one of the first meetings, the, the previous board basically stuck their finger up at us. And so it just, it never seemed to get on the right tracks, Terry. And I guess just going forward, you know, we hear the same old thing, right? It's going to take time. It's going to take time. And again, I will, I'm not going to argue how you measure the success of Act Dev, if it's bricks and mortar, if it's vertical structures, if it's like... You and I've had a couple of discussions about economic development and what we see. And I was part of the original task force, along with Fouts and a bunch of us that, you know, there were some things that we wanted to see done with, with Act Dev. And one of them was beautification. One, one was net migration into community and, and things like that, and, you know, so...
Right, but those are all things that, the net migration, the programs that we're putting on help lead towards that. The resources that we've already built as part of our branding, and branding isn't just a logo. Branding is, this is a great place to live. Those resources are now being shared with the oil sand plants to help them communicate with their camp dwellers about transitioning here. But it doesn't happen, that doesn't happen overnight, because you know what? The most important thing for those oil sand companies is to continue producing oil. And so they have to have a gradual transition of their staff. Because if they, if, if we took an approach like previous councils have taken, that we're shutting down the camps, you're just going to have a real angry oil sand industry who's not going to want to work with you at all. What we're seeing is, the industry has decided there's benefits to looking at working with us. And it's not because they're altruists. It's business. It saves them money. When Kearl was built, people were spending $1,000 to live in a walking closet. We couldn't have put the people who live in the camps in this community and have the local residents be able to afford housing here, okay? But we got it built. And now, what do we have? The municipality has invested heavily in the infrastructure. So now, we, we don't, no longer have a shortage of land to build on. We have an ability to do that. What we have to do now is to build on workforce, which is part of what we're doing in economic development. We want to build on the workforce. We want people to understand that if they live in this community, their kids have a future because they can go to college here. So it's not like we get to come here, but by the time my kid wants to go to college, I have to move. So why am I going to come here with my, my, my grade six kids? The people who are commuting right now, who are approaching their retirement years, they're never going to move here. They're going to commute because their home is back wherever they're commuting from. But it, it is a process, but industry is now working with us. I mean, industry's working with council. Council, we're not like, like, we're part of the team, folks. We're part of the group force with our shoulders to the will, trying to encourage the growth of our community for everyone. We want, we want it to benefit everyone. You know, we, there's, there's opportunities for everyone. There's economic opportunities for the Indigenous communities. There's tourism opportunities for the Indigenous communities. There's tourism opportunities for the non-Indigenous communities. The, the, we, I mentioned this before, I've been here before, and I said, the Alberta government sees this area as a growth area for tourism. And for the right people, there is money available. And our job is not to go build a tourist attraction. Our job is to help people who want to be in the industry develop the skills and connect them with the right people. And, and, and I think part of the problem previously was what our group was doing was not communicated very well. I think there was a sense that we did everything, and the, I said, my very first meeting here, we're part of the team. There's no I in team, right? I get it. There was a sense. We showed up for photos. That's because you didn't know what else was happening. You know, there, there have been things happening. And part of the instructions we've been given is, guys, let's not focus on retail. Let's focus on, on industry. And so that swings. That doesn't mean if someone wants to come and, and set up our retail business, we're going to say, oh, no, no, don't talk to us. We, we have, over this whole period of time, built up data. It's all about data. Person wants to set up a business here. We've got a book that shows where all the different zonings are, which we share with them so they can make that decision. which we share with them so they can make that decision. And so that's where the money's been spent before. That's where the money is going to be spent. But as I said, our most valuable resource is our people. So don't be surprised if, you know, 50% goes on salaries. But we have, we've cut back, okay? And in our pay bans that we went through, we've cut back even further, okay? And our staff may not be 100% happy with what our board did, but our Chair of our Governance Committee, and that's Melanie Antoine, who's here, she had all, we approved pay bans that basically is less than was recommended to us by the HR person that the RMWB helped us hire. And then we said, because what they said to us, Mr. Bousier, said, I asked him, well, what about the cola? Well, you don't include cola. Cola's extra. You should have this pay scale, but cola's extra because it's so expensive to live in Fort McMurray. And I said, no, it's not so expensive in Fort McMurray. And our organization decided we cannot go out to the community outside Fort McMurray and say that this is an affordable place to live. Well, we were paying cola as an extra to our employees because it was so expensive to live here. So we've rolled cola into our salaries. We're in the pay grid, which is less than the RMWB pay grid. Some, I learned some real fancy terminology. If you're over that pay cycle, you're red-circled. So we've got some staff who are red-circled. So that they, so unless we get bonuses because we've done some really good work, they're not going to get a regular, every year their pay goes up unless it's a cost-of-living adjustment. So we did that. So we took that out. We can do that because we're not part of the RMWB pay structure. And that's, and that's one of the ways that we've helped save our costs. And by hiring contractors for projects that we write for, keeps our costs down. So we're doing everything you asked us to do. And I'm really sorry that in five months, you haven't seen 500 houses get built in Parsons Creek. I'm really, you know, sorry. But I met with the head of the builders and right now, given the current prices for foreclosure houses, they can't compete right now. That market's got to disappear. And you know what? It's starting to disappear because what's happening is part of the contractor localization program is getting the contractors moving their people in town. I became aware of a major contractor having bought two condominium complexes for his people, their people. Now, that's better, that's better than nothing. I wish what they were doing is those people were bringing their families up here. But it's better to have them shopping in Fort McMurray and using the resources in Fort McMurray. And then we'll start working on getting the people who can live here and maybe get on the bus and go out to Kearl for seven or 10 days. That's going to be new staff, you know? But that's, 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 that's where our budget's all coming from.
Okay, so through the Chair, Terry, so you talk about tourism. And so what's different? Because, I don't know, probably 15 years ago, I took my dad, my son, we flew up to Mr. Goloski's cabin on Lake Athabasca. That's still is an option, I believe. I don't know if Doug still owns it. But so what's changed, though? We talk about how we're doing tourism. I mean, what's different than, what's new that wasn't available to us five years ago, three years ago?
Well, I'm not sure if Mr. Goloski's still running that business anymore. Because he wasn't making any money at it, I think, okay? Because he's a smart businessman, okay?
Probably not. It was a beautiful lodge and what little you pay to get up there. They probably weren't, given the season. But it was an option and I believe it's still available.
So some of the things I've seen since, and I haven't seen everything that we've done, but some of the things we've done is with the assistance of Alberta Tourism, we've helped fund case plans for Indigenous entrepreneurs to go forward and be successful, okay? We've helped fund that. We can't tell them to do this. We've helped fund the case plan to encourage it. There's, there was, I think, a case plan put together for the Fort McMurray meeting? Or was that, or is that just a discussion? Because I know, I know I met with them. Lisa and I met with them and they want to take their cultural center and turn it into a tourism attraction and become the booking center for not only Indigenous tourism, but local tourism. And we sat down and we said, yeah, you know what? That fits exactly with what we're looking at and how, how do we work together towards that? How do we work together towards that? They have to get their building built first. They have to get the money to get their building built. They've got a two-year construction project. But at the point in time that they're there, if they need our support, then we can be the liaison. We deal with sports tourism, okay? Again, we're not bringing Kiss back. I don't know if they're touring anymore. We're not bringing Aerosmith here, okay? We're not, we're not doing any of that stuff. But I think I mentioned when I was last here, we have found that we have a niche here. And it's our sports facilities. Our sports facilities are so excellent. And so we work with, is it, what's the proper name?
Wood Buffalo Sport Connection.
Wood Buffalo Sports Connection. So we're not, we're not planning to duplicate things, okay? We're working with Wood Buffalo Sports Connection to help them attract tournaments up here. Because that's what works. And what we've done is at those tournaments that they've come, we've tried to have someone from our organization there promoting our community, okay? It's little bits, but one of the problems is, is when we only have 10 people and everybody's working to fill 16 jobs, sometimes we can't be everywhere at the same time. We can't do it. We're short-staffed, you know? And, you know, the uncertainty about our future. I mean, we haven't even been able to hire summer students yet. And summer's going to be over, okay? So, I mean, you guys, like, you know, I'm not going to be like the last chair and throw keys at you guys or anything like that. I'm told there's a video about it, okay? I'm told there's a video. I'm sure it has a million views on YouTube because it'd be really funny. I'm not going to do that. But the amount of effort our board has put in to get this right for you, not just me, Melanie, Chris, the people who are here, and Doug, you know, the amount of effort we're putting in to get this thing done right, you know? And we haven't, we haven't, you know, haven't got it fixed in five months? You know, I mean, it just surprises me. But I guess, I guess I'm doing part of my speech that I'm going to be doing on Tuesday. But I only get five minutes on Tuesday. But I get an unlimited amount of time to answer your questions so I can make my speech.
Okay, so just, my final question would be for the naysayers out there with Actdev. What are three things that this Actdev board or staff are doing different than the last one? What are three positives? And I don't mean bringing Walmart because, I mean, Allard's, the Allards knew about the land. That land's been for sale for 12 years. And the Home Depot, nothing like that because Home Depot knew the developer there. So I'm just like, what are three things we're doing different? You mentioned camps. So you guys are getting into the camps and trying to move people in town. Is that, because that wasn't happening last time.
And what we're trying to do, what we want to do, let's talk about tourism first, okay? We need to get a destination marketing organization set up so that we can charge a destination marketing fee, okay? At the end of the day, like, that's probably a year and a half to get all that going and the money coming in, okay? It might happen that we come to you and say, hey, this destination marketing organization, which is now generating two or two-and-a-half million dollars, and has stakeholders from the Indigenous community and the other tourist vendors and the hotels, and they have their act together. Let's spin that off. We can support them, but let's spin that off. And we might do that. It's kind of tempting not to do it if someone, something's paying you two-and-a-half million dollars. But if you're using the money wisely, you should be taking as much of that money and putting that back into marketing to fill the room. So we might be doing that. But I think that's probably five years from now before that's going to happen because you have to get the Indigenous tourism people up and running and we're trying to help them do that, okay? You have to get the local tourism up and running to be part of the organization. And we have to get all the hotel people involved. But my understanding, I had a conversation with someone at the Home Depot opening, and he was telling me, they want to meet with us. They want, they see the value of our, my biggest concern was, how are you going to convince a hotel operator to add 3% to the bill and give it to us? How are you going to do that? Well, they want us, they want to do it. That's the messaging I'm getting. They want to do that. So that's part of the prob, part of the issue is, has been, has been resolved or seems to be resolved. We need to move forward. But, you know, what are we doing differently? What are we doing differently since January? You know, we've rethought how we're handling things. We've slimmed things down. We're focused on things that are going to grow local businesses. Because when you grow a local business, a person who's here, who's been in business, to grow his business, it's the biggest payback as opposed to going out somewhere and convincing someone in China to come here and set up a plant, that person. And so, so that's what we're doing. And we're, and part of what we're doing is doing it with proper data. And that's, that's our workforce development, you know? We've got, we've got, I don't know, they have all these buzzwords, okay? I, they had to give me a glossary cheat sheet when we did our strategic planning to have all the buzzwords. I don't know all the buzzwords. I'm also not answering your questions the right way because I should be saying, Mr. Mayor, to the Chair, through to Counselor Bousier, blah, 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 blah. I'm sorry. Apologize, folks. You can fire me if you don't like my demeanor. But, but that's what we're doing. But, but you know what? It takes time to do it. But, but I got, and I'm going to bring it on Tuesday. I got unsolicited. So we had the SiteLink conference up here, okay? Members of council, some were invited to attend. We didn't have the SiteLink conference up here so that we could fill some hotel rooms. We had the site, so these are, this is a conference of people who select sites for development, okay? We had it up here and they've been working on it for a number of years. I wish I could take credit for it. I wish I could take credit for it. I can't. They already had it in the play. You know, a couple of years from now, my memory will be foggy and I'll take credit for it. But, but what we did is we, we, not, we, the organization, I can say that. The royal "we" selected the presenters. These are leaders in industry about site selection that people pay money. What's the registration fee? $2,700, $2,400, something like that? They pay money to come and listen to. We selected, we had presenters that were key in the industries that we're trying to attract here. And then after they did their presentation, they took them on a tour around Fort McMurray, the college, everything that we had here to familiarize them with what this community really had. Because as far as they know, there's nothing north of Edmonton before that, okay? There's nothing north of Edmonton. It was, in fact, until there was the Oilers, it was nothing north of Calgary, okay? But I received this unsolicited letter just praising our community that this event where they had the opportunity to see what was going on had shown that we were a can-do place. I'm going to, I'll bring it on Tuesday. I planned to bring it on Tuesday. I planned to read it. Because it not only had praise for our community, but it had praise for our staff and how our staff had handled that. And that was an Actdev thing. Home Depot? I had dinner with the guy, with the Home Depot group the night before and was there at the shovel, it wasn't Golden Shovels, but they were Home Depot shovels. But they did the groundbreaking. And you can tell when a person's telling you the truth and when the guy's just BSing you, okay? And he said that their experience in getting the Home Depot set up going was so phenomenal. And he, but he wasn't saying, hey, it's just Actdev that did it. They recognized it was a team approach, okay? Everybody, whether, whether you think there should have been a Home Depot here or not, my understanding, there was a survey done and that's what the people said. One of the top five businesses they wanted to be here was a Home Depot. But he was saying, you know, someone from here should be phoning the mayor in Toronto and tell them how you do business. Because how you facilitated that, like, whether you're building a commercial store or you're building a factory, that whole process of approvals is what costs people money. And having the reputation about being a place that's open for business, and that was the messaging they had, you know? We'll, you guys will get it done for us. And I mean, you guys know more about that than I do because there's all kinds of stuff that went behind the scenes in planning. I mean, it was kudos to, kudos to everybody who touched that project. It was great, you know? So we have not been able to implement everything, Lance, that we want to do. Because we're just like, first step, figure out what we want to do. Came here and told you. You didn't say, get lost. Second step, come for a budget. Well, someone built a brick wall on that. There was a forensic audit that got extended, so that brick wall didn't get moved. So like, what you really need to be thinking about is not shutting us down, but giving us a three-year mandate to follow through with the initiatives that we said appear to fit with what you want to happen, you know? I mean, I think, I think you've chosen, I'm working with some really great people on the board, you know? I think, I think, I think everybody's focused. And anyhow, Lisa's given me the evil eye to tell me she has something to say. But I got to speak, you see, because he asked me a question.
Through the Chair, through Counselor Bousier, I'd just like to say three things, four things actually, that have really changed in this last year. We've centralized our spending, so we've really found where we can tighten up and centralize spending, which contributes to reducing costs overall. Also, we've, you know, reduced costs in terms of like some of the things that we were, you know, planning to spend on. We've, you know, tightened that up, so cut costs. We've restructured the organization and the communications that goes out. You know, I send you guys a weekly update. I hope you, you know, you read them. We do our newsletters out. We're more active on our social media, doing, you know, telling the community what we're doing. So those are things that I think have really changed, a big difference in how we operated before. What I will say is the work itself of economic development, we're continuing on. A lot of the funding that we do, we apply for funding soon. We're applying for funding for next year for projects. So all the grants we got this year, they were projects we approved. So all the grants we got this year, they were projects we approved years before. I do want to mention the, the Home Depot. Home Depot, yes, they might have known the developers. They know a lot of the developers, but they were not looking at this region. They were not looking at this place as a place to invest. Allard might have known about that land. We went out to a specific retail conference where all of those, you know, all the commercial developers are to, to market that. There were several applications in, and, you know, the municipality picked Allard, which was great, and that's spurring along a lot of development. Home Depot, though, we went, we talked to them at that conference too. Our job is to do the marketing to attract people to live here, work here, invest here, and visit here. We opened the door and get them interested in the market, and I have to say, I have to echo what Terry said, it was really a, a team effort. I know the mayor was really involved, planning and development, Amanda and such. You guys did a great job in facilitating everything else that goes along with, you know, when they're interested here in the market, you know, getting that, you know, cutting the red tape, getting that concierge service, doing that work. Shout out, it is a team sport. But they did say, my gosh, we wish we were here five years ago. It did take four years of meeting with them to get them to finally say, yeah, okay, we'll do our own market study and we'll look at, at the region. And I followed up and said, oh, here's the stuff, you know, here's the spring, you're doing the market study, here's the census, here's the information if you need anything else. They're like, thanks, I'll call, you know, we'll, we get our own data, like, we, thank you for your data, but we also need to get our own. And he called me back a month later and he said, okay, tell me about the different sites. And then, of course, from there, you know, we, we tell them, they choose where they want to go, they connect with the developers they know, and that's the site they picked. But I will say it, the work is, we did spend money on, you know, doing our branding and getting that right. We have those assets developed now, and now we are using them to, you know, as marketing tools to attract investment, people to live here, people to visit here, and people to work here. So, you know, that's something. And the other thing that's different is, yes, we were focused and did, you know, retail was what they wanted us to focus on. We were still doing the industrial analysis, and so when Terry talks about the SiteLink forum, we've planned that to come here, like, for three years ago, because we knew we wouldn't be ready with all the data and the studies that we needed to get. And what we are focused on now for those different sectors to diversify are 3D printing, data centers, sulfur processing, rare earth minerals, logistics, and, and tourism. So those are different economies. Nothing's going to ever be as big as what the oil sands are, of course, but, you know, these sectors, it makes sense for this region. Like, there's, there's a, there's a reason why we can go after a piece of, of these sectors. And so, to Terry's point, the SiteLink conference that did come, those site selectors that came here, I think there were eight site selectors, they represent industries that are all involved in, in, in these types of sectors, and they work with, you know, large-scale projects across, you know, all across the US and internationally and, and all of that. So, you know, now we're on their radar. We have so much follow-up that's happening, like, we, there's, there's a lot in the works. There might not be a deal come from that for three years, or, you know, it just, it takes time to make those large-scale decisions, obviously. But that's the type of work that we've always been doing and will continue to do should council, you know, approve our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boucier, Counselor Brinjoko.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. Thank you, Mr. Cooper, for the engaging session I just with the Counselor Boucier. And I want to appreciate you and the likes of Mr. Galowski for all the works. And you do have to do this for sure, and you're doing this with your already tight schedule. And also, I appreciate that, and I think the whole of council do appreciate all the, all the board members. And of course, also, we do not minimize the efforts of, of the staff. My question then is, in, okay, we were talking about in what way you've made changes to whether your strategies or what you go after or how you go after them. I also want to know in what ways have you engaged council a bit more and even community? Because I like the point that Mr. Cooper made about even the existing stakeholders, the businesses that are already here. How are we helping them? Collaboration with other similar service providers in this community? How are we harmonizing all the efforts to, 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 to bring the best results to this region?
Yes, thank you. And through the Chair, to Counselor Brinjoko. We do regularly engage with, you know, our business support organizations, so the, the Chamber and NABA and the Construction Association and Community Futures. And so, you know, when there's opportunities to work on projects together, we, we do that. So we do, that's similar type, you know, supporting the business community. We will, you know, we've always worked in collaboration in terms of engaging with council. So when there are opportunities, you know, you're all invited to the, invited tickets for SiteLink, for example, or, you know, we do give those updates weekly on, you know, what are, the activities that we're up to each week. We also, you know, work to, we work exactly with the SiteLink as well for that example. We also invited various partners, so the Chamber and NABA and the Construction Association and, you know, just various partners, they've all been included in those conversations and invites to those events as well. So, you know, again, if there's other things that you would like to see or that you'd like to be engaged more on, we would certainly do that, but we certainly think about that in all the different projects that we're working on right now, so.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, so if we were to amend the motion as it is, not, no, a question to them? I know you are ready for me, Mayor Bowman. No, if we do that hypothetically, and you have till July 8th, you are ready to submit all the documents? Is that what I'm hearing? Because July 8th is only six days away and maybe three working days away.
What I understand is the only document we haven't submitted is the audited financial statement for our year ending 2024. We've now received the financial statement from our auditors. They need us as a board to approve that. So I called that board meeting. We're meeting on Monday evening. Our auditors are going to be there by way of Teams. And unless there is something terribly wrong about those financial statements, they'll be approved and you'll have them on July the 8th. Because we're not just going to do a rubber stamp, like, we, we weren't prepared to just say, we got to rush this through and let's just approve it, guys. We're having a proper meeting with our auditors to, to do that. That's, that's what you require us to do. That's fiscally responsible.
Thank you. And now to Mayor Bowman, I have to wait, wait for this motion to go away before we can bring forward.
Or it could be amended. We'll see what, once we finish the questions and get to the motion, we'll see what comes there.
Okay, because I'll be prepared to bring forward some amendment.
I think everybody's talking about it, so I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brinjoko. Counselor Dogar, you have a question?
Yes, boss, I have a question. Thank you very much for giving me the chance. Actually, I'm in the car. You see, in the question, no, I have a winding comment. There's such high-profile people are there, we shouldn't do any haste like we did last time we had a visitor.
Yeah, right now, it's just questions for the presenter, Counselor Dogar.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cardinal, have a question?
I do, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. In your proposed services that the organization is requesting funds for, I do not see anything on indigenous tourism, nor do I see anything for reconciliation.
So Counselor Cardinal, you've been at our board meetings and have participated in our discussions. And so, we don't distinguish, so I guess the proper phrase is visitor economy. We want people to visit this region. We want to do that by promoting indigenous tourism. We want to do that by promoting tourism. We, on the tourism side, we don't actually put a line item and say, okay, we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars on indigenous tourism. Now, I do know, and I don't know where that's in our budget, but I do know that there is an Indigenous Tourism Association that helps indigenous tourism operators or those who want to be involved in indigenous tourism to develop skills and learn about opportunities, and we fund their membership.
So why apply for it in tourism, indigenous tourism Alberta then?
Sorry?
So why, why apply for indigenous tourism Alberta if we're not going to implement it throughout the region?
I, I, I'm not sure if I understand your question. We, we provide memberships so people can participate in indigenous tourism Alberta. Okay, that's, that's what we do. We've also provided funding to help indigenous tourism operators to build out a case plan. And we've done that, but it's not, it's not specifically to so-and-so, we're doing this. It's somewhere within our budget.
Yeah, so in, in, for that particular item, product development, so tourism product development, we would work with, there's a number of things we do for tourism product development. So if there's opportunities that, what, what Terry was saying, if there are people want to start a tourism business, if there's a bigger opportunity than we would, we've had in the past, some expertise on, on hire that would work with those opportunities to help build business cases and make it a viable opportunity. Some of those opportunities are still, they're still working on, and some, you know, some opportunities were presented and they might not, you know, the, the, at the end of the day, the decision might not be made to go forward with those opportunities. In terms of the tourism, indigenous tourism operators, we do fund the memberships of indigenous tourism operators for Indigenous Tourism Alberta. So that is also happening. And in terms of other support, we have the Rural Pop-Up Program. So the supports that we offer through Startup YMM is available for the entire region. I know that in rural communities, it may be a little bit different. So we want to have at least our stands down there and have some of our staff go to the rural communities regular, on a regular basis to better understand, okay, what, what are some of the needs, what are some of the business opportunities? Not just tourism, any type of business opportunity for, you know, for any type of entrepreneur. We also, our investment attraction lead works with the different communities as well to find out, you know, a lot of this would be with the, the business arms of, of our indigenous communities. So we would look to find out what types of, you know, where's their priority? What, what types of business would they want to expand in or potentially partner with or invest in? If there's land, for example, okay, well, what type of land, what type of, you know, if we have a business that comes to town and we want to have a location to present to them or a group to meet, them to meet with, you know, well, maybe it's Fort Macay Forest Nation in their business park, or maybe it's, you know, we're working with, you know, to see what Conklin wants to do. So we are working on a lot of that work, and that's, that's always been the case. And so we continue to do that. We don't have it specifically outlined in terms of, like, we don't have indigenous investment attraction. It's investment attraction which includes all types of investment attraction. Same thing with our tourism programs and things like that.
Maybe, maybe, maybe give me an example of a deliverable that indigenous tourism has done rurally.
This year?
Since I became counselor.
Since you became counselor, so, let me think. A, well, we've had, we've hosted, we've, we've had Indigenous Tourism Alberta have their conference up here. They had it just, just this past year. And they had it in a previous year as well, and that, they've never done that before. We work with Travel Alberta and with Indigenous Tourism Alberta. There's, Renee is the name of the lady from Indigenous Tourism Alberta. She comes regularly. She also, you know, oftentimes our staff will go with her to some of the rural communities and, and, you know, make introductions, show them around, that type of thing. We also partner on programs.
How much funds was given by Indigenous Tourism Alberta?
Indigenous Tourism Alberta is not a funder. They're a membership organization, so we actually pay them for the memberships of indigenous businesses in this region.
Okay. Emerging reserves, how much funds we got there? ECTV?
Through the Chair, we don't have, like, you, we don't have an emerging reserves.
We have a reserve bank, right, that holds funds.
Oh, in the EDIF, there's.
Our 2000, December 31st, 2024 statement, if I'm reading it correctly, says that we have balance at the year-end in the internally restricted EDIF, two million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Now, in actual fact, there's more money there because some of it, some of the money was locked up, locked up, and we've had to move money around, but that's, that's what's left, yes.
You answered my question, thanks. Who had, do you have signing authority? No?
I don't have signing authority yet. We're in the process of changing the directors. What we did is, I believe you may have been at the, at our board meeting, but our registered office used to be an Edmonton law firm. We passed a resolution to move that to a Fort McMurray Law Firm, a solicitor who doesn't do litigation work, so we figured that the solicitor would not be suing the RMWB, so that would be a good, a good fit for, for our registered office, and she's working to get the, get that changed. What often happens, though, is for this kind of a corporation, you usually file an annual statement with your new directors at the time you file your audited financial statement. We didn't have the audited financial statement. So we've given instructions to the solicitor to move forward and file the change of signing authority, notwithstanding that we don't, we're not doing the full package. We're behind in filing the full package because you would normally have had it filed by now because you'd have your audited financial statement.
So after, after Mr. Wiedlich left, who has signing authority?
I, I personally don't know who has signing authority. I would have assumed that mayor and council, when they took over, would have had signing authority.
Through the Chair, to Counselor Cardinal, yes, that's correct. So the signing authority was the interim board at the time, which would have been the reduced, you know, Counselor McGrath, Counselor Weigle, and the CAO.
Okay, thanks. Do you think we can do this in-house? All this stuff you guys are talking about?
No, well, sorry. You can do anything in-house. How much do you want to spend for it? I mean, you guys told us, do more, do it cheaper. Well, you can't set up a destination marketing organization in-house. You can't do that. By in-house, you mean within the RMWB. You can't do that.
And also, Counselor Cardinal, I think that'll be something towards your motion for Tuesday? Because right now, the, what you're talking about is, we'll be collapsing corporation, that's your motion on Tuesday, so leave that until the motion's on the floor.
I'd be glad to ask the question. Thanks for your reply.
Or I could continue to answer your question, you could withdraw your motion.
No, I'm pretty strong on my motion, thanks.
Question, Counselor Cardinal?
Nope, not right now.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions there. Can I have someone make a motion? Councillor Weigle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the 2025 sustaining grant request made by Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo Economic Development and Tourism be approved conditional to the receipt and acceptance of the 2024 audited financial statements.
The motion that's reading on the screen, isn't the motion councillor Weigle read? I don't think so.
Well, I would second councillor Weigle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the 2025 sustaining grant request by Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo Economic Development and Tourism FMW B E D T be approved conditional to the receipt and acceptance of the 2024 audited financial statements.
The screen still says denied. I believe councillor Grantison seconded that. Should be up now on your screen. We don't have to let them know. No. Okay, thanks for the motion councillor Weigle and the second councillor Grantison. Councillor Weigle, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that, that there was many questions a year and a half ago towards economic development, and I know that I had quite a few of them. I firsthand was able to jump on the board when we reduced it and get in there and ask a lot of questions and see firsthand the work that Lisa and the whole team was doing at that moment. My confidence grew in economic development massively at that point, seeing all of the relationships that they built and the hard work that they've continued to do and still continue to do under duress, not knowing the future of where they're at. As a council, we decided to move forward after that point and create a new board to create a new future. I think that an absolutely incredible board of some of the finest business people in Fort McMurray has been put together and I have a ton of faith in the fact that they came forward in and in itself and put a new mandate forward, a direction and, and guidance has given me huge confidence in the direction of where we're going. I actually believe in and in itself that our continuous dialogue to dismantle and to tear down FM, Fort McMurray Economic Development is actually, is what's hurting it. We heard, I've heard firsthand from Invest Alberta and Alberta Tourism that we are a hotspot. We are on one of the top places for tourism, top three places in tourism in Alberta, and that's firsthand from them. When they're trying to get outside of the Calgary, Edmonton, Banff, Jasper region, we now hit in the top three that they're interested in due to some of the relationships, but also that is, to me, is one of the biggest things that is actually on the horizons. And to me, to answer the question, that is, what's different from three years ago is that Alberta wasn't interested in doing tourism here, where now they've, they've set a fourth as one of the hotspots. Invest Alberta and then as well as the SiteLink, seeing them come up and as excited as they are to see what's going on and then actually having accredited, I remember, it wasn't that long ago that everybody said that nobody wanted to do business in Fort McMurray because it was so hard. And hearing Home Depot in and in itself saying how, and I heard it firsthand, saying how easy and amazing it was. And that was due to a collaboration of a lot, so it wasn't just economic development, that was also Amanda Owens, her team and the RMWB. But to me, I think that we've turned the boat. I think that we're headed in the right direction. I've heard nothing but positive things from the outside investors looking in right now. I don't know them all and I don't talk to them all, but the ones I have talked to, it's been great. And so for me, again, a lot of the issues that, you know, Mr. Cooper brought up without, we decided not to fund it. And I remember having that conversation, we decided not to fund it because we didn't know the future. And we said that we would deal with it when we got across the bridge. Well, we've crossed the bridge and we're here. And so because we chose not to do it, I think it's only in our best interest to continue funding what we've started going forward and see fruition to it. Do we need to give good guidance on it? Absolutely, we do. And I think you've done it. I think, Lisa, I think you've done a great job with communicating. I like the weekly updates. I like to know that what's going on and you haven't left us in the dark, nor the community. It was a tough pass and we didn't have a good relationship. We've asked for different, you guys have delivered different and therefore I think to try to stop it again, it just puts us back. I don't think that we can bring it in-house. We can't get ground funding in-house. I do think it's better on the outside, we did it properly, and I fully believe in what we're doing going forward. Thank you.
Thank councillor Weigle. I'm not going to repeat everything councillor Weigle said, but I do think we selected a group of successful community members that are volunteering their time, energy and skills to make this work. And I, I'm not just blowing smoke, but Mr. Cooper has probably the best economic development presentation we've got in the last four years, explaining what's going on and really get it to us. So I'd definitely be supporting this. Councillor Benjoko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again. I was getting ready to move a similar motion. So if councillor Weigle is amenable to a friendly amendment and with administration confirming the need to have a date for when we receive and would have reviewed the statement before we approve.
Thank you councillor Benjoko. Can you clarify, are you looking to actually add a date? Are you actually asking to add the wording to have a date?
We need to have a date by when we will receive. It's like an open check if we don't have a date.
So you're looking for councillor?
I asked a few questions to know how ready they are. And I know it's not as easy as one meeting, but let's say two weeks, three weeks after, when can we expect to have the financial statement? And also, I would like to see the word review and then we not only receive but review by maybe a certain date. I don't know if I'm making sense to administration.
I think Community Services will review the, the CIP, they'll review the, those, those there, and they can probably send us a, a message letting us know.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I'm asking for us to have a date that we would expect to get back the report. Is that something you agreeable to?
I, I guess, I'm not sure. I guess I'm not, I don't know the exact amendment yet. Like, if you're looking for a date, we can ask the question and find out a date. Are you asking for council to approve it or just for it to be back to administration by a certain date to be reviewed and, and approved?
Okay, I'm asking for us to not leave it as open-ended forever by a certain date, even if it's 2029, we need to have a date. And if administration finds my point reasonable, then we put a date that is achievable and have, I don't want them to say by the A, that's not realistic, but what date would make sense?
Okay, awesome questions based on that. Mr. Cooper, when is an acceptable date for you guys to have the financials into the administration?
As I indicated, we're expecting that that will happen July the 8th. The only reason it should not happen is if we don't have quorum, okay? Currently councillor Cardinal is one of our board members, councillor McGrath is one of our board members, CEO Butts is one of our board members. We have a board member who's away, so if we don't have quorum for our meeting, that would be the only impediment, I would say, in having the report there on July the 8th. Okay? And, and so, but, and what I'm hearing though is that after we get the report to you, you need, you want, you're looking for a date for your internal people to be able to respond to that. That's, I'm hearing.
That's how I'm understanding it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Through the mail to everyone, there are two parts. A date that you can commit to, to get the report to our administration. And then administration, the other part is softer. Administration can then tell us when they can, or they can always send email, or Mayor would be very handy to get hold of.
I think for Community Services, if you get, once this is completed, get back to council and let it, let us know when you've received the audited financials and money's been released to economic development or there's a plan.
Okay, so then is?
Through the chair to councillor Benjoko or perhaps even to councillor Weigle for a pointed clarification on the word acceptance on that motion, because we can receive it, but what discretion or what, once we review and analyze what happens to the information, the findings, if there's something that we would like to communicate to council? I guess that's my question. Is it to come back to council at a later date or?
I think with this, just get an email communication to let us know what's going on.
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
So now, based on the response from Mr. Cooper, let's say you can get the forum maybe within a month or something, would that be a reasonable timeline?
My, my hope would be that we would have it to you July the 8th, but if you want to give us a month, that's fine. I suspect if I don't have it by July the 8th, when I'm here on July the 8th, I'm going to have more questions about that, so. But of course, I now have learned that if you ask me a question, there's no time limit on my response.
Okay, may, may I suggest then that we have maybe July 8th plus two weeks? If that's, if that's reasonable for both parties?
That's reasonable for me.
Thank you. How about you, oh councillor Cooper? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Dogar?
Hello, sir. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. I think you are postponing it for two weeks or four weeks. Good enough. You know, this is a very high-profile people and, and this job is such that we need more time.
No, that's not, no, that's not what's, that's not the motion, that's not what's going on. Do you have your screen in front of you?
Yes. Don't you hear, see me?
Yeah, we can see you, but have you read the motion that's on the floor?
Okay, okay, no, sorry, I didn't see it. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I wrote to get that I am committed after seven with my family people going abroad. And so, sorry for if I am doing something wrong.
Thank you, councillor Cardinal.
Thanks, Mayor. When I first, when I first, well, first of all, I will not be supporting a motion. Reasons being, I think we need to clean, I think we need to clean house and Actdev. Some staff need to go. Some.
Point of order.
Appointed upheld. Thank you councillor Ball. That's not a per discussion.
You can't.
And that's staff matters, councillor Cardinal.
I'm going to be honest and sometimes that might get me in trouble. But I'm being honest and I, after reading forensic audit and time and time being disrespected, arrogant leaders coming and thinking they can talk the way they can talk, including past, past individuals as well. I, I feel that I've, there's a big restriction and resistance to, to the Indigenous content that I've been requesting time and time again from Actdev, and it seems like I have to twist people up in order to get what it is that I've been requesting. Our administration sees the flaws, they've seen them from, from years since I became councillor, no offense to the, to the existing board, but that is, I myself as well as holding on to some of the activities that caused the forensic audit. And us, us having faith in the, the Actdev to, to, no, three, no, two previous years that I approved the budget, now we're gonna, now we're wanting to amend and possibly approve, approve this one, this one, I will have none, I will have none of it. I believe that, you know, if there's $2.5 million in the reserves, they can operate for the next six months without our $3.9 million. And maybe then we could have a little bit more deliverables and, you know, when we have our quarterly reporting come from Actdev, then maybe we could see some of the stuff that I will be sitting on the board. I'll be there for the meeting on the 7th. Hopefully that some changes can be made, the bylaws especially. There's no, there's no real tangible, significant, concrete bylaws in place. That was a really big issue. I knew that from the start, when I wanted to sit on this board, I, I wanted to try to get the right people in place, but also try my best to fix what has been wrong, what is being done wrong, like a lot of the organizations that abuse the system here in, in this RMWB. I'm sick and tired of people taking money and not being able to report it properly. It's, happens time and time again, this organization, it goes on deaf ears. And we still continue to just say, yes, 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 vote for me, vote for me, yes, 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 that's, you know, and nobody wants to say no. I'm that person going to stand up and actually pull some of it back and say no? Because I am credible and I feel that at some point we need to start taking back some of our resources because we're not getting the proper deliverables from the organizations that are fraudulently taking money from this place.
Point of order is called, there comes to our councillor Cardinal, because you're accusing an organization of fraud.
Mismanaging our funds and, sorry, the mismanaging, managing of our funds in this RMWB needs to stop. And I will not be approving no more funds to go to Actdev. Because of that fact, I see the paperwork, I see everything that has been going on with this organization. And I, I just feel that at some point, when do we actually stand together and take some of it back instead of always saying yes to everything? And I, I stand with that and I will not be supporting the motion. And if I have offended anybody, I do not apologize. So that being said, I will not be supporting the motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Cardinal. And with that, yeah, I think also you being on the board, you can also make those changes from within. But with that, I'll call for a vote. In favor online?
In favor.
Thank you councillor Grantison. Is that in favor councillor Dogar? We can't hear you councillor Dogar.
I can see his hand up.
I can see his hand up. Go.
Are, are you in favor councillor Doger?
Yes. Yes, in favor.
Thank you. And that's carried with three in favor. Thank you, everyone. Sorry, six in favor, three opposed. My apologies. That's it for this evening's meeting, everyone. Merci chou, kinos kumten. Thank you and bonne nuit.